Yeah. Mr. Garcia, we have a call. A call.
We do?
Yes, Madam President, I believe we do. On your call.
Proceed.
Certainly. Called order, Trenton City Council meeting, February 4th, 2025, February 4th, 2025 is now called the order. Please stand and salute the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Hello.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Laws 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first-floor bulletin board in City Hall, filed in the City Clerk's office, and posted on the City of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call. Vice President Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Present.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettinburg. Councilwoman Frisbee. For the record, I did receive a call from Councilwoman Figueroa Kettinburg. I imagine she is en route.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Present.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Harrison. Councilwoman Williams.
Present y presente.
Council President Gonzalez is excused from this meeting this evening. Myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, present. Legislative Council, Mr. Edward Cologie. And in for West Bridges City Attorney is Palmer Richardson. And Madam President, if you, Madam Vice President, if you'd like, I can read the invocation at this time.
Yes, please, thank you.
Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
And Madam Vice President, at this point in time, under presentations, we do have an item. This would be zoning board member selection. You do have a packet and copies with names as well as the resolution and resumes and applications for, from members to the zoning board. And you may start off in any way you choose. And it's my understanding that the board would like to make some, would like to ask some questions to the members, to the applicants present.
Yes, so do we have any of the applicants present with us today?
I'll go right ahead and call names. If individual in the, in the audience is here, please raise your hand. Venita Cap, Capi. I apologize now for if I've butchered your name. Thank you. Aneed Sanchez. Thank you. Michael Hurtado. Mr. Hurtado did mention he would be here. He may be en route, I'm not quite sure. And Mr. Mark Mattson. Whom I do not see either. Okay. So at this point, Madam Vice President, it appears you have at least two people here whom you may wish to ask questions.
Yes, we can call them up one at a time and get a presentation from them and open up questions to the council.
Very well, I'll start off with Venita Capi, if you'd like to approach the podium. Thank you.
He's pressed a button.
And Ms. Capi, if you would, please just press the button and state your name for the record.
Venita Kapahi.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
And I'll turn it over to the board.
So if you just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you applied to the zoning board, we would love to hear from you. And then if council has any questions, we'll open it up for discussion.
Of course, thank you, Councilwoman. My name is Venita Kapahi. I have been a Trenton resident for about seven years. I currently work as a policy advisor for the Department of Human Services at the state. And I have a background in, in both social work and in planning and policy. I attended graduate school at Blaustein at Rutgers, did a dual degree in both planning and policy and was able to do some coursework in, in planning law and have a bit of a foundation in, in theory that way and have been eager to contribute more to the city. I am raising a family here and live and work here and, and very much want to be able to contribute more and heard that there is a need for, for members of the zoning board. And it seemed like a good opportunity to be able to both apply, I don't have a lot of skills, but, but am able to, to read and write and interpret policy. And it seems like a good opportunity to be able to contribute those skills to thinking about the health and safety of Trenton residents and the future for a city. And hope to be able to contribute. And I'd welcome any questions.
Thank you. Does any council members have any questions at this time?
Council President, Vice President rather.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. Ms. Kapai, can you talk about, you know, your experience living here and what you have observed in our city? That comes, seeing it from your angle as someone who studied city planning and planning in general, what things really interest you and maybe that Trenton could do better in? Or just, you know, based on what you studied in the past, what do you see as opportunities?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a wonderful city. I, I, I have found the people to be really warm and feel really lucky to be living somewhere that is both on transit, where I'm able to, to access other parts of the state and, and other cities easily. And I think there's a lot of opportunity that way. I also think, you know, of course, it's a city that also has challenges. I think like being a pedestrian, often my personal experience with a small child and a stroller in areas that there is traffic at high speeds can be challenging. So I think, yeah, I think that they're like, both the location is wonderful, the density is, is wonderful. I think that there are, of course, a lot of opportunities to, you know, I, to continue to, to improve pedestrian safety, bike safety, to, to think more strategically about, and I, I mean, I see a lot of evidence of this, but continue to think strategically about development in a way that allows folks to be able to, to access the city and, and other parts of our region without necessarily relying on a car or if you choose to more safely. I hope I answered your question.
No, you did. And then from your planning background, was there a particular area that maybe you specialized in that you think might help with being on zoning board? Or any particular area of study in a urban city?
Um, I think. I mean, sure, yes, I think there are a lot of areas. I think I spent a lot of time thinking about housing and I think there's a lot of opportunity here and thinking about like, what development in the city can look like and ensuring that our, our laws are interpreted in a way that meet, meet the development goals of the city. Obviously, trends and development patterns are changing. Our population is changing, like the way that families are structured is changing. So I think just continuing to make sure that, that the development is happening in such a way that, that meets, that aligns with those patterns and is able to, to meet the needs of shifts in population.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
Does any of the members have any more questions?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Madam Vice President, I believe, oh, we do have another individual here present at this time. One of our applicants has stepped out. Mr. Hurtado was present.
Well, that's cool.
My apologies to the public.
Good evening, council.
Thank you for coming. Can you tell us your name and your address for the record? And just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you applied to the zoning board?
My name is Mikel F. Hurtado. I live at 506 William Street, Trenton, New Jersey. Born and raised in the city, fourth generation on my mother's side, first generation on my father's side, first generation American, actually, on my father's side. I apologize, I'm just getting over something. The timing could not have been worse. I, like I said, born and raised in Trenton, attended Mercer County Community College for two and a half years to get my associate in liberal arts. Transferred to Kane University to get a bachelor's in public administration. Currently discerning whether or not I want to get my masters in the same field or go to law school. I think I could do both, but it's a very big commitment, so I'm holding off, I just want to work for a couple of years, bank some money and then figure out what to do. But I'd like to serve on the zoning board because I have personal relationships with some of you. I have professional relationships, I like to believe, with all of you. And I see that the city is on an upswing. And as a lifelong resident of the city, it's very heartwarming to see that. The change in the tone from the last city council, I believe everybody in the city, it's a not only welcome but desperately needed change. And so the cities are in upswing, you all have contributed to that. But it's not just the city council, it's not just the administration, it's a lot of people that are behind the scenes. And I don't mind behind the scenes because nobody's ever just a member of the zoning board. Nobody's ever just a member of the city council. Nobody's ever just a city employee. We all play a role and nobody's just a resident. We all play a role in making sure that the city functions. We are all codependent on one another. Human beings are not made for isolation. So I believe that I can contribute as a member of the zoning board to help facilitate the change in morale. And hopefully, God willing, a change in the conditions for this city, which is the capital city, which I don't want to say was a great city, it is a great city. But we all know we can do better and I would love to contribute to that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Does any members of council have any questions?
Council Vice President.
Councilwoman Frisbee. So good evening and thank you, and I hope you continue to feel better in your health. Glad you were able to make it out. I just want for the record, if you would tell us what in your background do you believe equips you to be on the zoning board to help out with that?
My educational background, I would say, is my number one qualifier. I went to New Jersey's only urban research institution. Urban issues were at the core of my curriculum. I had the benefit of having two professors who were public servants, Mayor Chris Bowge of Elizabeth, who has been instrumental in that city's turnaround, which is why I believe he just was reelected to his eighth term. So he must be doing something right. And Senator Ray Lesniak was another of my professors. And between the two of them and my other professors who have served as city administrators and in other local government capacities, I believe my education, the issues that I studied, the issues that I wrote about, have prepared me and also being a lifelong resident of the city, having family that is very socially connected, I won't say financially or politically connected, but very socially connected. We know a lot of people in the city and surrounding areas. So this city is our life. And having grown up and seeing the changes, good and bad, that I believe is a secondary qualification to my education. And as I'm discerning whether or not to go to law school, zoning board will be working close in conjunction, following city statutes, state law. I don't want to say I have experience in law, but I certainly have an interest in it. And so I've read statutes, I've read ordinances, I understand them and I can interpret them as it would relate to my responsibilities as a member of the zoning board.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Vice President.
Any other members have question?
Well, my question to you is, like you said about the team effort, about working, that right there alone is what I like to say. And I, like you said, you've been involved in the city, your family's from the city. You have an understanding of where the city needs to go. So overall, you kind of actually laid out what you see regarding the zoning board. And same thing happens with the planning board. We need people to be reliable. I know you'll be reliable and I can see your dedication. So I honestly, you spoke from your heart and that's what I like to say. Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead. Mr. Hurtado, thank you for coming and speaking with us today. I, I mean, I just want to say, knowing you to the degree that I do know you outside of council, I'm actually refreshed to have you come before us and want to be part of this because I know that there's no bias in you and no agenda in you and that you will do the work of the city, what's right for the city. You will ask the right questions and you will make sure that proper protocol and procedures are followed for what we plan to do in this city with the right people in order to move the city forward. So I just applaud you for coming forward, for being willing to dedicate your time and your expertise, your growth with the city, with people coming in, developers and the, and the like. And I think that you'll do a great job, so. Thank you.
Council Vice President.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. Mr. Hurtado, I'm very happy to see you step up as a young person to want to take this on. It is a position, it's non-paid and it's volunteer. I found it over 14 years to be very exciting in many ways to try to help our city have growth, protect itself, balance the neighborhood. You know, the people who live where a zoning application is going to take fruit, the applicant themselves, as well as the city's interest and the law and ordinances and zoning plans and the Trenton 250 plan. But one of the things, whether you have personal relationships or professional relationships with anyone up here or the administration or anyone on the political side of things, one of the things I'm pretty sure you appreciate is that you need to be independent and you would be independent as you operate, if you're selected to be a zoning board member. One of the things, Milford Bethia, several predecessors before me as a Northwood councilperson when he appointed me, said, "I will never put pressure on you to make a decision. I want you to make a decision based on the facts and what you believe." And is that something that you think that you would perform that same way as the advice I was given much long ago?
Well, I have respect for all of you and I have, you know, affection for some of you in a personal capacity. But if there is any issue related to my capacity as zoning board member, your capacity as council members, those will not be discussed in any other setting other than a professional setting. And I will not be strong-armed by anybody sitting on this dais. I will not be strong-armed by anybody sent from anybody on this dais. And my independence will be based on an understanding that we are working together. We are not steamrolling either. We are not influencing either. We have our areas where it's like a Venn diagram. We intersect, but we have our own separate areas. And so if there is an issue that you'd like to discuss that would relate to zoning, should I be a member, we can discuss that at a zoning board meeting. And if there is anything I want to talk about as relates to city council, I will come and stand right here in front of all of you and talk about it. I will not talk about it one-on-one with any of you.
Thank you. And my, my second question, when it comes to zoning and the possibilities of this city, and certainly we have a lot of challenges and I know you're aware of many of them because you are very plugged in, following the news, et cetera. What do you see, what is exciting for you about Trenton? And when you talk about being here, being from Trenton to others?
Well, the thing that excites me about being from Trenton is present and future areas of study notwithstanding. I'm a history lover at heart. And this city has a lot of history. I've always felt that that was a lot of untapped potential for the city, its history, its ability to be a cultural focal point for the nation, you know? Benjamin Franklin said that New Jersey as a whole is a cursed state. It's like a keg tapped at both ends between New York and Philadelphia. That that perception has lasted too long and Trenton can be at the forefront of establishing not only just Trenton's place, but New Jersey's place as a, as a cultural stronghold for the city as a whole. And the thing that excites me the most about Trenton's future is, again, I know that I have said it and many people have said it, but it bears repeating, is just the change in tone and the way these council meetings are conducted, the change in the relationship between the seven council members, between council as a body and the administration. Trenton is on an upswing. I keep my ear, you know, not just to what goes on in this building, but also to what goes on in our different neighborhoods, our very diverse neighborhoods, which is our strength. And every demographic in this city has said that they noticed the change. And we have the benefit in this city of having a very engaged populace. Our news groups on Facebook, be they Trenton Orbit or Peterson's Breaking News or any of the local areas that have a footprint on social media such as Ewing or Lawrence. Ewing, Lawrence, Hamilton, all the suburbs, it's all greater Trenton to me, whether they like to admit it or not. They all depend on the success of this city as well. So the thing that excites me is a thing that excites most people. It's just the change in direction that this city is facing. And I'd like to be a part of that, not for my own gratification. It's not a paid position, it's not a, I mean, at, at the meetings, I'll be able to sit up there, but that's not why I'm doing this. I don't want to sit in your seats as comfortable as they look. I'm doing this because this city is on an upswing and I want to contribute to that.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Does any of the members have questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, Madam Vice President. I believe we did have another individual here who was an applicant. It appears she may have had two of the left. If you'd like me to try anyone via phone, that'd be, I'm more than happy to. Other than that, I believe, are there, I don't believe there are any other individuals here from, that have, having applied to the zoning board at this time.
Mark Mattson is not present either.
I'm sorry?
Mark Mattson is not present either.
Mr. Mattson, if you're here, please raise your hand or please come to the podium. I don't believe so, ma'am.
Okay, let's move on, please.
Certainly. Uh, next on our agenda at this time, Madam President, is public comment for agenda items only. And to the public, public comment for agenda items only, this is, uh, Hillary? If I can have the other public comment, uh, clipboard, please, I'll trade you.
Mr. Garcia, can we explain to the public briefly what the differentiation between the two?
Certainly, Madam, sir, Madam Vice President, and yes, we'll take this and put it in the back in case anybody wants to, uh, wants to sign up again. At this time, I do not have anybody listed for a public, public comment for docket items only. To the public, public comment for agenda items only is for just that. Items that are on the docket are agenda. If you, the public wishes to speak on those items prior to council voting, they may and they may do so, they have five minutes to do so. You may address anything solely on the agenda or docket. Any other items that you wish to address the council for, we'll go through our general public comment, which there will be time allotted for that as well. This time, Madam Vice President, I don't have anybody listed for a public comment for agenda items only. If you'd like, I can move forward, uh, further with the agenda.
Yes, please.
Certainly. Uh, Madam President, at this time, I have listed your approval, if you want to ask for a motion to approve communications petitions and reports.
Do I have a motion to approve the communication petitions and reports? Go on, move.
Second.
Thank you, roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettinburg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, at this time, if you want to, excuse me, I apologize. If you would like to extract or if the council would like to extract any particular items from the docket for questions and/or from a potential consent agenda.
Council President. Vice President.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. Resolutions 25028, 25030, 25027, 25029, 25033, 25034, 35, 36, 38. That's it, thank you, for me.
Council Vice President.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettinburg.
I too have 27, 28, 30, but additionally 35.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Council Vice President.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes, ma'am. 34, 35, 36, 27. Potentially, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. There's no further questions. We can start with the first one, 25 dash 028, the Department of Housing and Economic Development. Or two. I'm just going in order, yeah.
Thank you. Madam Vice President, may I?
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. Good evening, Director Liston.
Good evening.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions for you about this resolution. Regarding the investors, the non-residents, are we going to look into their, their history, like within the city? If they've bought other properties here, like what is the, the condition or the upkeep of what's going on? Because we don't want to keep letting slum lords purchase properties and not maintain them. So what are we, are we going to do any kind of vetting or looking into the people that are looking to take advantage of this?
That's probably one of the main reasons that we're passing this is to prevent the proliferation of, I don't want to call them slum lords, but investors from outside the community who are not reinvesting into housing properly, building substandard apartments. building substandard apartments, uh, and overcharging on rent. We vet everyone who comes through, especially with the investors who want to buy rental properties. We vet them through the code department. Do they have rental licenses? What's their histories of rental license? What's their violations? Uh, we're very fortunate. We have a computer system that we can do this within minutes. Uh, I've actually sent staff out of town to look at their people's properties, to see what their properties look like, if they're maintaining their properties. So we do vet our, um, investing properties, very much so.
Okay. And then if at all, I, I was just curious, will the rent stabilization board play a part? With dealing with like, so with the landlords and things like that, like is that going to be a place that they will be able to go, the residents will be able to go to, to place complaints and everything?
Once they do the, once they build apartment, um, we would then, uh, they'd be subject to the, uh, rent stabilization oversight. So they, they do play into each other in that sense.
Okay. And then it says that under number five, the city will monitor compliance with these timelines to ensure successful rehabilitation occupancy. So what happens if they don't do it within the timeframe?
When we write the deeds, we're going to have reverts in the deeds. So if they don't meet their timelines, I mean, we, we will allow for certain extensions if there's a problem with the building or, you know, the weather, um, but the, the problem in the past is, is that we sold properties. People have, have, you know, made a promise to complete something over 18 months or two years. The failure of the city is the monitor, isn't hold people accountable. Uh, the plan in the department now is that we'll have a monitor on each of the, um, projects. The other thing that really helps us out is we're going to encourage people under the 203K program under HUD, where people can borrow money to, to get houses. They actually have a monitoring, they will parallel our monitoring of the progress of the property being rehabbed. So we're hand in hand with, with that process.
Excuse me, just for a second, can you state your name and department?
Oh, I'm sorry. Arts Liston, Department of Housing Economic Development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Vice President, may I?
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes. Uh, Director Liston, um, I know you said that we, we're going to give refurbish. There'll be refurbish in the deeds. Do we know about what, how much leeway we're going to give them? Like, is it going to be like a six month, a year? Do we, have we figured that part out? Except first of all, let me, before I even ask that, I'm excited about the fact that we are doing this as a city that we allow. We're going to be prioritizing residents to have first bid as opposed to having this monopoly of, uh, organized companies and corporations that have been coming in here and taking over. And then, um, I'll say it's being slum lords, taking it, then they're taking advantages of, uh, of our community, hiking rent, not cleaning the buildings, not taking care of it. But I want to just make sure that we don't end, we end up making sure that the people who come to the table, they're not coming to the table just to say, I want to save this property from going to somewhere else, but they actually have a plan in action so that they're not coming. And then six months later, it's still sitting the way it did when they first purchased it. Is there something like that that we're going to, and if so, I'm just really asking, what are we looking at?
We would do timelines into the, um, redevelopment agreements or the agreements we have with the people. You know, one of the things, we're looking at every 90 days to have a monitoring step. The realization is with an older home, and I'm sure many of you have older homes. When you open up a wall, you have an unexpected, um, emergency. You know, every, every, every house in the city is going to get opened up, it's going to have an electrical problem. They're going to have some kind, and we have to be flexible in the sense that if they come in after 90 days and say, hey, I just opened a sewer line and I got, you know, I've, I've got, you know, a $10,000 expense I didn't project, then, you know, we, we've got to, we, we got to take a common sense approach. And we can say, okay, give us a timeline that you think you can do this to move on to the next phase. And, uh, if it's too long of a timeline, I would come back to council and say, I'm, I need an extension of this redevelopment agreement or something because of X, Y, and Z. So, uh, but we have already planned out where we would have timelines for the individuals and making sure, and, and making sure financially they have the ability to complete the project.
Thank you. And then, uh, one more question is you, you touched on it with, um, historical homes. Like mine, most of the homes, the, the shells of them are hollow. There's no insulation, the windows, everything, if you don't, if it's a historical, um, area, that's really what I call a beast because you are, it is, uh, it's rough getting what you, you need at a decent price. Will there be something in these, um, with the sale of these homes that will help these residents? Because a lot of folks don't realize what they're getting into when they get into a historic. It's good to buy a home, but if it's a historical home, helping them understand that you can't get, uh, shingles replaced on here. You have to put it back exactly the way it is. And if so, is there something that we have in place that will help them by getting blown insulation or having insulation or anything to help offset the cost?
I think that's a very good point. One of the things that the, with the, with that idea is I will have someone from my landmarks. If someone's buying a historic home, first we will inform them it's in a historic area. Many times properties are transferred and the people are not advised they're in a historic area. And all of a sudden they come in for a permit or something, they say, well, you need historic approval and that, that's a major problem. So what we'll do is, is your, your idea is what we can do is I'll have somebody from landmarks meet with them, make sure you understand you're in historic area. Understand that you may run into potential excessive costs because windows, you know, the roofing of some of the houses, some of the structure. The other thing about the 203K program, this is very good, is they send, they send inspectors in, they send the preachers in, and, and they work parallel with us, uh, in these issues. And when we work with them, we'll make sure that we point out that this is a historic, uh, home and that, you know, we, we have some regulations, but we will also work with them. A lot of times it's, you know, if somebody buys a house with a slate roof, you know, replacing a slate roof is like a torture because of the cost factor. And there are substitute materials you can use, looks just like slate today. And, uh, we can work with them on advising them on that.
Excellent. So, and then this is my final, final question. Since you just hit it, as a homeowner of a home that had these slate roofs in them, a lot of times you have homes that are not in historical communities, but they have those slate roofing. Is there a way when, if, let's say the new owner decides they're not going to keep it, for us to work with them to possibly refurbish that? So that play, those people who are purchasing and they need it, that we can, um, help them with it? That's just an idea.
Yeah. And I think you're working with the 203K program. I don't know how much FHA would work with them on that. But, uh, you know, we can definitely look if, if it's being income based, if they're rehabbing a home and we can work with them through some, um, existing RCA funds or something. You know, we're trying to get people into houses. We're trying to get homeownership. We're going to do everything possible to get, get money to people so they can, they can rehab houses and live here.
Thank you, Mr. Liston, Director Liston.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
Welcome. Madam Vice President.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. So we'll move to 25030 now?
I'm sorry.
Questions. I thought you had another question. I'm sorry. We're still on this one.
Thank you. Just one statement, one question. One of the things I'm hearing from a lot of folks, uh, to my colleagues bringing up historical areas in the city is stepped up enforcement, particularly at landmarks, because for many years that went fallow. And, uh, now, you know, we have a lot, a good number of houses that do not meet historical standard. And that's one thing to, you know, the point of the city, that we have to keep that history, no matter the era of it. I live in a historical home too, and it's not fun to have to get wood windows, but there's a reason you have to get wood windows and modern day materials are much better. But my other question stems from the slum lord issue. And we have many properties in the city that are unfortunately rental because we only have a 39% homeownership rate, which I'm really glad to hear some of the things that were happening because I know our council is committed to increasing homeownership in the city administration as too. Where do we stand percentage wise as far as the number of properties that are rental, having been inspected, let's say in the last three years and fully licensed?
I, I would, since I would have to get Yolanda, the chief, because I, I can get that data for you. But we recognize every year that the rental registrations have to be done. Actually, I, I think we received a check, we have checks in the area of $70,000 today just for rental registration. So, uh, we do track that. Every house, if something, we come across a certain house that is a problem house, we track it in the system and say, okay, this isn't licensed. Let's take corrective action. So of, of every house that we know of, it's a rental, we, we license. We do have people who sneak around and do get punished for that. Speaking on the enforcement, um, we have a, a code enforcement, a housing inspector just assigned for, uh, enforcement on historic, in the historic area. So we're, we've become very proactive in that, and it, and it's not to punish people. Let's, to make the, when you deal with, with homeowners and especially people who can't afford it, you work with them through a process. And we're not looking to go out there and, and write a ticket and get them into court and punish them. What we try to do is, okay, come in, let's see how we can help you. Let's see how we can work through the process and let's see how we can get you back in this house and keep you in this house. Because a lot of the time it's senior citizens. We do have funds where we can, if they, again, income based, if they can, if we can help them, we're going to help them staying at home.
And are there any measures that are ordinances that we could here on council help with to strengthen the enforcement on the non-historical side? As I know, you know, money's a factor and hiring more inspectors, that's ultimately something we need to do. But is there anything more legally that we could do as a city better than we've done in the past to help with this terrible issue?
I, I think that we, we have enough, especially with the codes that we presently have. And, and we have a very aggressive, uh, housing inspector group. And, and when things are reported, we go out, uh, we just had a big, I won't call it a raid, but we went up on Greenwood Avenue with the police department and cleaned out a whole, um, house and a bunch of vehicles. But at the same time, we went along the whole block and we're bringing in the whole block into compliance. It all comes down to, you can write all the laws in the world, if they're not going to be enforced, they're useless. We, I think we have a, a strong code and, and our housing people, uh, enforce them, not to the letter of the law, but reasonably to help people get the problems corrected. But when they must be cited or summoned to court, we do it.
Okay. Cause I just, my last, just not necessarily pushing back, but a point is we have people whose landlords do not live anywhere near here and they're crying for enforcement and they demand enforcement and they deserve enforcement. And I will be happy to, uh, through administration, get you a list of some streets, particularly I have concerns with in the North Ward that has been shared with me. But if there are any tools that we can help with to have the letter of the law maybe enforce on a lot of these landlords who do not live in Trenton, that would be something that would be wanted by our citizens.
Oh, yeah. And, and we, actually at the cabinet meeting this morning, we had a, a discussion regarding that with the courts and the enforcement and more strict accountability to the landlords. Our biggest problem with our landlords is we have people who live out of state who are landlords. We have a very difficult time, you know, we have people living in, uh, New York City and so forth that we can't go across state lines. And if we can entice them to go, to come back in and, and sign up for something, we can arrest them for their contempt of court. And we have a lot of problems with the absentee landlords, um, doing that. So we, but we are very aggressive with, with getting them, getting them into court. And if they fail to appear, getting warrants issued for the people.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg, and then Councilman Joe Harrison.
Thank you. Hi, Director Liston. A quick question, um, just for a point of clarity. What does the process look like if, with this new redevelopment, um, ordinance resolution that we have, what does it look like if somebody were to be interested in a property? Is there a timeframe for others to also, uh, express their interest in that property? How are we choosing? What does it look like?
Right now, we have an existing list of about 90 homes that people are interested in. Uh, and one of the things, well, first I, I need this resolution, this policy. So when we get to a point where we have, for lack of a better term, a tie, we have two people who want the property, that we can sell it to the homeowner, you know, the resident first. And so, um, that, that's where we just backed up cross referencing there. Cause I have some, I, I have properties, you have three or four people, uh, who may be interested. Then it's going to come down to who do we prioritize and sell it to? This, this is what it does. And the reason this is done as a resolution, let me point this out, and not an ordinance at this point, is the fact that there's going to be bugs we have, we need to work out with this. No legislation comes imperfect. I want to make sure that we can, this works through. I want to make sure that, that it's effective. And then what we can do is we would draft the ordinance, creating basically a law of how we would do it. But this gives us a policy decision right now of how we can move forward and do that. People interested in properties right now, we've, we've, because we have so many backlog, we're trying to get through that backlog. And if we can get through that backlog, we're probably going to reopen, uh, applications April 1, so people can come back in and, and we, we can figure out. But, but again, um, we don't want to sell off properties real quickly to absentee landlords if they're coming in one as investors. You know, we want to give the, the resident, the long-term resident or the person interested in moving into the community. We want to give them first shot and that's where our priorities are.
So for instance, if two people came in and were interested in a property and they all, they both fell under the criteria of three, priority three, let's just say, um, for instance, um, does it go to first come, first served, um, whoever expressed the interest first? And then is there still a window open for that same property? If somebody were to come in with a higher priority based on this program, would they then, you know, be able to purchase that property over the two individuals in priority three? That's the question.
If we, if we had two people who came into the same, the discussions in the department were, um, kind of set it up as a, give us the highest, highest and best offer. All right. And, you know, if the two parties, you got a one-time shot, and this is what real estate agents do. Give us your highest and best so we can move the property and, uh, give them that opportunity. And that's, it's an equal decision, but it's who's willing to pay the higher price.
Councilman Harrison.
This resolution to me makes a lot of sense. It's local, people investing in the community. But it was brought up like one of my colleagues about inspectors. Are we planning on getting more inspectors down the road? And I bring that up because, because, I bring that up because, uh, because of properties like, uh, city side. We have people who live in city side properties who repeatedly are complaining about their heat not on, waters, no water, um, windows not sealed. Their properties seem, majority of them seem to be having issues.
Councilman, if I could hire 20 more inspectors tomorrow and we had the money to do it, I would do it. You know, we have a restricted budget. We, we do press our, um, inspectors quite a bit to get them to make sure they're on the street daily, making sure things are getting enforced. But I will tell you that, that some of our problems are, are deep. DCA realizes it when they did their, their reviews. But if we could hire more, we'd love to, uh, but we also, it's a prioritization. You know, you guys know better than anyone. You got police issues, fire issues, inspection issues, but I would love to hire more people.
Cause I'm bringing up, like I said, city side, because you all have a lot of families with kids in there. And that is horrible in the wintertime, people don't have water, don't have heat and the windows are not properly sealed, so they're in their house, their apartment, and they're freezing.
And they're one of the greater violators that we have and have been cited, I think in the hundreds of numbers of, of summonses have been issued. And we're going to make every effort to, to bring them through the system.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Uh, 25 dash 030.
Madam Vice President, would, uh, 028 be on consent or would that be a roll call resolution?
Sorry. Consent?
Consent?
Yes.
Madam Vice President.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. Mr. Liston for 25030. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. One, um, in looking at the scoring that was done by the three people that scored, I just want to say that of the three, Brian Weakling gave an excellent scoring, um, in my opinion, to go by. Very detailed, um, in his notes and with the percentages that he gave so that, that, that we could follow his thought process. so that we could follow his thought process when he gave us the whys as to how he scored the people. Dr. Minicapelli, he gave us some notes, but it was just basically weak, strong, satisfactory, you know what I mean, and then the percentage, okay. And then Maciel Ferreira didn't give us any notes, just numbers. I would just like to ask that as we move forward with the scoring throughout the city proper, that whoever scores or evaluates these people, that they do take the time to give us why they're giving them the numbers so we understand, again, the thought process to help us to dig in a little bit, you know, deeper as to what is going on.
Certainly.
Secondly, I just would like to know, is there a conflict? Could there be a conflict at all? Because the persons that we're looking to partner with, which I have no problem with, already they own businesses downtown in the area in which they would be helping to make this plan for. So is there any conflict with that?
We didn't, we didn't see any conflict in the sense that this is a report that's going to be reviewed and looked at by both myself and, this is through the UEZ, making sure there's no advantages to any businesses and so forth. One of the things that we wanted to do is, we wanted to get somebody who knew the town locally, who kind of suffered through the business cycles and so forth, to really help us look at the UEZ and how we want to go in the next five years. So to me, it was actually a positive in the sense they knew. And bringing in an engineering firm or somebody from outside, they don't know a town, you know. And we wanted somebody who could look at it and give an objective point of view from, you know, obviously UEZ, but also from the business community. And I think it helped.
Okay, and thank you. That was your opinion. So Mr. Richardson? So there is no conflict? You didn't hear what I asked? Okay, so what I asked was, is there a conflict because the company that we're looking to partner with, the person owns a, owns business down in the city in which they will be looking to help do the plan for? I just want to make sure that we're good with that. It's nothing against anyone, it's just, I just, is there a conflict, yes or no?
Councilwoman, so you're saying that the person owns?
The business that we're going to be doing this with owns business downtown Trenton.
And what would, what are you saying would be the conflict?
Is there a conflict that we go and allow the person to do the five-year development plan in their own business? I mean, I'm not, I don't, I don't see the big, I'm just making sure we good.
Sorry. From an initial perspective, I don't see what a conflict would generate.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg?
Yes. Hi Director. I wanted to thank Councilwoman Feliciano just for asking that question because that was a really good question. And I understand why she was asking that question. My question to you, Director Liston, was with regards to the grading, how do we go about choosing who will be the graders? Because I understand Maciel Ferreira, she's the, she's with Division of Planning, and Brian Weakland with Housing Economic Development. But then Dr. Minicapelli, who's the Director of Department of Health, like, how did that fit in? What was, what thought process went into that?
Good evening, Council Vice President. Good evening, everybody. Maria Richardson, Business Administrator. From the procurement point of view, basically, when we have professionals scoring the RFPs, they look into certain elements, specific elements. And those elements are described in each RFP. For example, I'm not sure what are the elements that are being scored here, but we talk about how close the RFP that proposals are to the specifications. And we give a specific weight to those elements. Price is an element, experience is an element. And it's basically what we define to be the elements to be scored. So Dr. Diego Minicapelli could be scoring an economic and development specific RFP without having the experience because he knows that he was going to be looking into those elements that we are scoring. And that happens across the board. For example, you could have the Director of, Mr. Onitiri evaluating a proposal that is for police or for water. Because you are not evaluating into the specific performance of the job that is going to be performed, but the elements of the proposal itself. I don't know if I explained myself well.
No, thank you for that explanation. I mean, my position would be, I think it would be more beneficial if the individual scoring did have the background in the content that we're looking at. You know, we're looking to fill a position for UEZ. We're giving somebody five years. I do think that somebody with that expertise and background would have probably been a better grader than somebody from a different department, different expertise background. But I mean, thank you for your explanation.
Not for scoring the RFP itself because the Director will be responsible for making sure that the content are met. The Director of the Department will be, you know, they will decide if the elements are met once we issue a contract. If, he will be revising whatever plan that person is going to be providing, right? And he will accept it once he meets all the, he meets all the elements. But for the scoring, sometimes when you have somebody that has a lot of experience in the content, might bring bias, right? So, and you want to make sure that you are scoring just based on the elements that are, that we advertise.
Okay, thank you. I, thank you.
But that is more of a, that's why I wanted to explain it because it's more of a procurement process than a technical process.
Council Vice President?
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you. So I want to thank Councilwoman Feliciano for bringing up the discussion of conflicts eventually. Because one of the things, it would seem to be obvious, but I just want to make sure on the record. So when it comes to UEZ, if this company is approved to be, you know, the facilitator of this plan, the principals who own the company would not be able to apply for UEZ funds, that's correct? And obtain UEZ funds?
I would, I'd get a confirmation from Wes, but I think that that's a legitimate concern. And I would review that with legal counsel prior to us any, providing any. There is some objective benefits they can receive just by state law, which will have no effect either one way or another. But as to special treatment or special loans or something, I think we'd really have to look at the fact that they were part of the process of the five-year plan.
Okay, so if this were to be approved tonight, there may be a hard stop on this if, after you talk to Law Director Wes Bridges, that this cannot proceed further if the principals have an intention to apply for UEZ funds or be involved with some kind of?
I think basically, at this point, it kind of has an effect where they would not be eligible. But I'll confirm that with Wes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Any further questions?
Council Vice President?
Councilwoman Feliciano?
So I just want to throw this to Councilwoman Williams. So based upon that and putting, and saying that this is okay for consent agenda because we don't know the other, the other piece of this, is that a concern?
I would say to protect the institution of this council, just to play it safe as accomplished as these gentlemen are and are intent with this plan. And I've seen the plan and it looks like it's a very accomplished one. I think to be safe for their reputation, as well as this council administration, we may want to table this for the moment and come back once we have an answer from our Law Director.
Right. Thank you. Thank you, Council Vice President. Okay. So no to consent agenda? I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying no. So can we have a, I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting?
We have a motion? Do you have a second?
A second.
It's been moved in second. I'll call the roll. Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Matter is tabled, to be clear, until the next public meeting?
Yes, on the 18th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Liston. Next on the list of questions, 25-027.
Madam Vice President?
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Thank you. So with the listing that we have here, appointing the council members to the boards and commissions, I don't believe we still need the Board of Education as listed because it's now an elected board. It's not appointed by the council or by the mayor's office. So that wouldn't fall under the purview of the council. So I think that should be stricken from this resolution. Mr. Cologi, can you, can you add to that or assist with that? So I'm saying that the Board of Education that's listed on here, in previous years, it's always been a position where we had a liaison. But that was when we had, it was appointed by the mayor. It is no longer. It is an elected school board, so we, yes, so we would not.
Has anybody communicated with the Board of Ed to determine their position on us creating a liaison because they are technically totally authorized under the statute?
Right.
Right, but it was, it was always appointed.
Right. Did anybody from this council ask them about? So my thing is, people can go as participants and just sit. So if council members want to go as participants and be there and just say, you know what I mean? Okay, but I don't think we have to have, we're not obligated to have a liaison designated.
We can move to remove that.
Yes.
We could pass the resolution and we can further consider it down the road. Maybe communicate with the Board and see what, they might not want a liaison from the council. I don't know.
Right, okay, thank you.
All right. So do you want a motion to amend this list to remove that until we hear back from the Board of Education? Or we could remove it altogether and it'd be council's own prerogative on whether they want to attend?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to remove the Board of Education from this resolution.
Second.
Motion second. I'll call the roll. Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. And that is to amend, to omit the Board of Education from Resolution 027, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg?
Yes, I just wanted to note that I did not sign up to be on the library board again this time. So I would like that omitted from my liaison positions.
That is correct, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you.
All right, so then would that be another motion to amend the resolution listed?
Yes.
So a motion is being made by Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg?
Yes.
Is there a second? Thank you. And roll call. Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. We are omitting, again, Council, excuse me, Councilwoman, what board was that? Thank you.
Council Vice President?
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. So this might just be a pointed discussion, but I don't believe, and I don't know if there ever was a liaison position for landmarks, but I do believe there may be a need for one as it's restructured and given different issues in different neighborhoods. If that's something to consider, perhaps we would need to get direction. I don't know from Law Department on that. But if we can discuss that soon as a, as a council adding that.
Yes, and the reason why you don't see that on the list, it originally was, but no one selected it. So we only have the ones that the council members selected. So if you're interested?
I would be interested, actually, ma'am.
Okay, so we can wait until we have that information? But I'm sure it's probably not a problem to have a liaison?
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions on the list? Is this, can this go to consent as amended to remove the BOE, the Board of Education?
So moved?
Yes, and to take the library board from Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg?
Yes.
So that matter will be put on consent, correct?
Yes.
Okay, as amended.
Next on the questions is 25-029 would be the Department of the Administration?
Council Vice President?
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, which, which accreditation? I know we're looking to reject the bids for it, but I'm just curious. Which accreditation are we exactly going after? Was it the CA LEA or the NJSA COP?
That would be part of the evaluation, the recommendation process with the consultant. There are benefits to both. Going through both is really cumbersome. So that would be, we will follow the recommendations of the consultant. I think that there is a preference for the, not for CA, for the officers, the Association of Officers.
Okay, and as of right now, we're not accredited?
No, we are not.
Okay.
The accreditation is a voluntary process, right? And it basically just evaluates the police department performance compared to a set of standards or best practices. So we want to go through the process, but so far, we haven't done it. We haven't done it before.
Okay, thank you. I was going to say it's a voluntary process.
It is a voluntary process.
With professional standards. So why are we doing this now? I think it's great, but just, why are we doing this now?
We thought that it would be a good exercise for the police department to, to... Every organization really gets, it's a enrichment process when you go through, through a self-evaluation. Because usually, self-evaluation is part of an accreditation process, accreditation, institutional accreditation, right? And so just going through the process will be enriching for police. Because when you compare your own practices to best practices that are already standardized for other municipalities and for other departments, it's enriching. And it basically takes the subjectivity from a lot of different things that the police, police agencies do. Because if you have a standard and you say, okay, this is the standard for best practices, we are not there, but we identify that we are here. At least that gives us enough information to know where we are compared to where we should be, right? So for, for the police department will be a good exercise. And will probably take a couple of years for us to get the accreditation. But I think it would be great for us to do that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm good with it going to consent?
No, thank you.
The next question is 25-033, Department of Finance. The next question is 25 dash 033, Department of Finance.
Council Vice President.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes, thank you. Just a quick question. What is TS fee overpayment?
Let me go to the resolution, please. Give me one second, please.
Thank you.
Uh, it's, uh, 033, correct?
Yes.
Sorry. I thought that I was off the hook already.
No.
I'm sorry. What is the question, Councilwoman?
On the, um, on the schedule, what is TS fee overpayment? What's the TS?
Let us see. Probably Colin will have to come to help me out on this one.
I see in the memo it has the other stuff, right? The duplicate payments, erroneous tax appeal overpayment. I just was curious what.
Oh, yes. Um, that is a tax service fee.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
That's all I wanted.
All righty.
Any further questions?
I can move to consent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, 25 dash 034, Department of Health and Human Services.
Madam Vice President.
Good evening. Dr. Diego Minacapelli, Department of Health and Human Services.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. Just one thing, Woman Space is no longer Woman Space. They changed the name 1113 2024 to Unity. So if we could amend that to reflect the, the proper name.
Sure, we can do.
There and throughout the agreement. Also, on the agreement, the contract request form is still listed under Woman Space as well. That was all I had on that.
Councilwoman Williams? Thank you very much, Council President. So Director, one question that I just wanted to be able to bring up, because we are, you know, this resolution's for a host of issues, homelessness, and, you know, so forth, particularly in the time that we're in now with winter is very harsh. So I'm wondering where we are at this point with outreach bans and addressing healthcare disparities in our city. So now we're about a year or so into our cannabis industry operating in Trenton. Hopefully it's being successful. And with tax money that was devoted, 10% of the tax was devoted towards identifying and addressing healthcare disparities in the city. And I do also know that, you know, there was money from the opioid settlement. I don't know if it's reached us yet, but I'd like to know what efforts are being used weekly to help out with our homelessness issue, or hun house, as the term is also, but also with addressing folks that have mental health needs in the city.
Councilwoman.
Yes, ma'am.
To just respond to one element of your question, and it's about the cannabis tax. We have, so far, we have only received the one payment. So that hasn't yet gotten to Dr. Minacapelli's effort for mental health.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. And so, um, we have the Continuum of Care group. And so we have all of these recipients working together to make sure that we address homelessness. And so during this time, as you see, because of the temperatures, we are working together to address that. We also have our own social services, which is run by Ruth Carter, and she also addresses the same issues. So together as a group in the Continuum of Care, um, um, organization, we are trying to address all of that. And we're working very hard for it.
Is there a missing element or something that we need to do as a city or that city council could approve or help with to address this issue going forward? Because I know we've, we have a lot more, particularly since Kensington and Philadelphia was shut down by the City of Philadelphia.
Yes. So we're always looking for more organizations to reach out more to our community. So that, that's the help that we need to.
So supporting the nonprofits already exist?
Right, right, right.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
So you can go to consent? Okay, yeah.
Mr. Garcia goes to consent.
Noted. Thank you.
That takes us to our next question, 25 dash 035.
Madam Vice President.
Uh, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. So Dr. Minacapelli, um, it's a couple of quick questions. What is the status with the Columbus location?
Uh, we're working to bring up the location to code and be able to open it. We have identified a surveyor, and we are also working on the inspection of the, um, septic tank along with other things that we are going to do inside of the shelter. So that's where we are right now.
Do you know when this is, do we anticipate this to be done? Because I know before you were saying about the inspection of the septic tank, like we heard this before. How long is this gonna take? Because we're gonna keep housing the dogs over in Pennsylvania when we need to be housing the dogs down in Columbus. Do you know how long this is gonna take? Can you give us an estimate about when, you know, how long?
My hope that it is that in the next three months, we'll be able to be operational there.
Okay. So at least by the summertime is a realistic.
Yes.
Expectation. Nobody's holding your feet to the fire on it, because I understand that things happen. But we just need to hear how many more times we're gonna have to keep approving these resolutions for these payments. So there was that. Also, um, what is the, so this, I guess, is for BA Richardson. What is the status regarding the receipts of the donated services brought into question at the 1224 meeting, the resolve to that?
I'm sorry. Could you please repeat that question, Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. What is the status regarding the receipt of the donated services, the goods and services that were brought into question in the 1224 meeting? What's the resolve to that? Where are we at with that?
Um, nowhere. Um, I know that the Department of, the, the Law Department is working on a resolution.
Correct.
I, um, the previous resolution that was, uh, was presented to me implied that I, um, agreed to the, to receiving the donation. And so, um, I did not sign it because I didn't agree to it. And so that is, um, we are working on a different resolution. And basically, it's the same conversation that happened at this forum before. We need to either return the money or accept, uh, the donation, but with specific language that it was not properly handled. And so it's one of those two options will be presented to council. Most likely the next meeting, but we are working on it.
Thank you. But moving forward, though, steps will be implemented regard, regarding acceptance of goods or services and things?
Definitely. Um, we are also working on it, on an ordinance.
Okay.
Um, basically regulating the steps to when we accept a donation. And basically look at a donation as any grant or any other incoming money of that nature. Because when we apply for a grant, we come before you to ask for your approval to approve, to, to apply and accept a grant. Should be the same for donations.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Council Vice President, I'm sorry. Oh, it's Councilwoman Frisbee.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg, then.
Thank you.
Frisbee, and then Williams.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Minacapelli, hi. Um, quick question, because we're talking about the, um, the animal shelter. I know that there was correspondence with regards to whether or not, um, the Yardly Kennel had offered assistance to our most recent timestamped dogs. Were you able to get an answer about that or speak to anybody directly with the kennel as to whether or not that was an option?
I, um, I did not. And the reason is because all of the timestamped dogs have been found homes.
As of today, though, but the correspondence was prior to today. That's why I'm asking.
Uh, yeah, I, I submitted the, this request to the health officer and the staff, and they, they probably, um, you know, um, went over the, the proposal and figured out if it was appropriate or not to, to take that and contact them.
I mean, it's important because I don't, I mean, I don't know when we're going to be faced with more timestamped dogs moving forward. And it, the Yardly Kennel was willing to offer these services so that these dogs would not meet their demise and that they can help out. I believe that the offer was said to be done at no cost, no additional cost to TAS or to the City of Trenton. I think that that's a relationship, or at least a conversation or communication that should be had if it's being put out there. It was brought to my attention from others. It was not any direct communication that I had. It was just brought to me and I wanted to ask the question, as that's just a resource that we could possibly use.
Yeah.
With that, I do want to say that I, it was reported to me, and I'm not sure if this is accurate or not, and maybe you could tell me, that I believe 35 dogs have been found homes from the shelter since January 1st. Um, 15 of them were time stamped. So the 10 dogs that were just recently time stamped and five dogs that were time stamped just before this have all found their forever homes, have been placed, which is great news, and 20 other dogs that were not have. So that's great progress. Um, my question is, how do we keep that memento? I understand that, you know, and correct me if I'm wrong again, I understand that there was volunteers that definitely helped in this process with Pet Finder and things of that nature, volunteers that we sometimes shun, and we don't want them to have anything to do with the shelter, but they are helping to move things along.
Yes.
Which is a concerted effort that we need to definitely pay attention to. What I want to know is, moving forward, how do we keep this memento? And what strides are we taking into enforcing, like the breeding ordinance and things like that, so that we are not getting this pouring in of animals constantly and constantly paying these checks to Yardly to house our dogs that we cannot house?
Definitely. It is, we have to fix the system. In order for me to enforce the ordinance, I have to have a good team. So we're working on it. We need to have an application for that too, for the ordinance. Uh, we're working on that too. Um, we have placed the advisory board, um, you know, uh, out there. So we have people interested on it. We receive around 16 to 18 applications. Uh, we are reviewing those applications. Um, I have put, um, bids for, um, the animal welfare, um, animal kennels. Um, all of those things are important for us to move forward. Um, and we have a good momentum right now because we have more engagement from the community and these organizations. Uh, we are overcrowded. We have exceeded our limits in the animal shelter, so we have to make a progress. So I think we're moving forward and with the help of these organizations and the community, we can do so. We cannot do it alone.
I mean, 96 dogs right now that I'm looking at, um, you know, is, is on the lower end of what we've seen as of late, as of the past few months until last year. Um, like I said, sort of does seem like it's progress, but at any given time, we could get an influx, we could get the dumping of several animals. Um, with regards to the, the Animal Welfare Board, I know you, you're in the process. What does that look like as far as what insight those individuals are hopeful to provide or that the city wants to gather from those individuals, once that board is created and approved? What, what are we trying to extract from that?
Um, I, I guess, um, guidance of where we're going to go with the animal shelter, our ordinances, our, our, you know, rules, regulations, um, and, um, yes, something like that.
Okay. All right. I look forward to, um, you know, possibly meeting in the future to discuss the breeding ordinance further, to see what other tweaks or something that we need to implement so that we can hit the ground running with it. Because, you know, we do need to start getting these animals neutered and spayed and, and licensed and, and stop a lot of this breeding and dumping of animals that is just completely egregious. You know, the calls are coming in all the time. And also to get that number fixed with TAS. I know I tried calling the number over the weekend and, and during the week a couple of times, and it's just a constant beep, 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 beep. We're not getting through. So if we can just fix some of those nuances, that would be helpful.
Sure, 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 sure. We can do so.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, good Vice President. I just wanted to back, um, pedal a little bit with, um, Councilwoman Feliciano's question. And it was said that we have processes that we're putting in place when it comes to donations and all the rest of that, which is exactly what is needed. I just want to know, do we have limitations on who we are going to, is there a language in the verbiage that says who is allowed to, that no volunteers, da, 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 da. There are only certain depart-, a certain title within the department that will be allowed to accept grant, that, that will be able to accept donations of any sort in there, as opposed to everyone, um, of being allowed, but essentially making sure that we have the verbiage in there that says volunteers, they have to come through a staffed individual.
Absolutely. Um, I mean, if a volunteer, volunteer organization accepts donations, that has nothing to do with the city, right? We are talking about money that it's been, money or services that are being offered to the City of Trenton, any of our departments, directly through the department or through administration. But we will try to centralize that. We are not trying to, um, make it, um, at, at the discretion of anybody. It will be very regulated. Other, we, we are basically just checking different ordinances from other municipalities that already have those ordinances in place. And of course, that if somebody wants to donate a bag of food at the shelter, they have been doing that for years. That's not an issue. Or, you know, blankets for the cats, stuff like that. We are talking about considerable amounts of money, just like any of us. We are not supposed to be accepting donations and presents from anybody because that's an ethical violation, right? And so, but we, we know what the limit is for a municipality. Most of, most municipalities have a limit of $500 and up in terms of donations, cash or services, right? That's a lot more than we as individuals can accept. Um, but it, it will be very regulated and most likely will be centralized. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I just have two questions. The first one is, uh, do you expect that the Animal Welfare Board will hold its first meeting in March? Or how soon will that board start functioning?
I think more in April.
In April?
April. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, how soon will the members be selected, notified, and have that date set up? Because a lot of folks who've, some, some folks who actually submitted resumes for are anxious to find out.
Yes. So right now, we're going over the applications. We are selecting the ones that qualify for that position, and then we're going to do interviews. Um, after the interview, I'll, I'll make the recommendations for, for the mayor.
All right. Hopefully early April. That would be nice. Uh, my other question is, do you happen, I have a rough estimate even of the time, the transition period from transitioning dogs from Yardly to Columbus, once Columbus is up and ready to run. How long would that take? Would that take a month, a few weeks? How does that look like?
Just the transition period?
Yes. How long would that be?
If we open in three months, I think the transition period can be done in, within two weeks.
Within two weeks?
Yes.
Okay. And no animals would be left in Yardly?
Exactly. No, no, no animals there.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg?
Thank you. Um, really quickly, I was gonna address this in Civic Comic, but, comment, but it was brought up twice about the $100,000 donation. And I know my name has been dragged into this, and I want to just address it really quickly now. Um, I did address it in Civic Comic prior to this. Um, I don't know whether it fell on deaf ears, but it has been in the paper. It has been on social media. And just to clear the air, in June of 2024, I was aware of four appliances that were donated to the animal shelter by a said gentleman. I was not part of those negotiations. I was told that it was going to happen. I showed up when it was being donated. I put it on social media thanking the person and saying this was great because it's something that the shelter needed. Um, I do not have any knowledge of any $100,000 donation in goods, services, work, what have you, to that shelter. I was not privy to it. I was not part of any conversations about it. I was not present when it happened. I don't know what the exchange looked like. When we had a conversation here in council, I stood here and I asked who.
When we had a conversation here in council, I stood here and I asked who was responsible? Who was, who was in charge at the time that this took place? I still don't even know when this donation took place. So don't know who was in charge of at that time. I wish that people would stop saying that I had anything to do with this because I knew about a previous donation that I posted. Had I known about a hundred thousand dollar donation and I thought that it was in good order, I would have clearly posted it. I would have praised it if I thought that it was done appropriately. Any of those things, you would have seen it. This is amazing. Hundred thousand dollars. We need this for the shelter, whatever it went to. That is not the case. I challenge anybody to find anything outside of that and present it. I had nothing to do with that donation and I want that said for the record. And if anybody has any questions, you could please come to me. And if anybody has any other information other than what I just said, please bring it to my attention. Thank you.
Council Vice President?
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Thank you. To that end, additionally, when you're looking into who can accept what and who can sign off on what, BA Richardson. Because of the nature of that one hundred thousand dollar donation that was made, it, it went a little, it went a step further where someone looked into the background of the person that made the donation and found a, a litany of records, right, of charges that this person had. And people went on and tried to blame the councilwoman and said that she should have known when in fact you had a law enforcement officer who was the chief of the animal shelter at that time, who they should have known. They would have had the records. They would have been able to look into it to do that. So again, for the record, when, when we're slinging and saying, we're going to talk truth, regardless of who likes it and who doesn't and who's friends with who and who contacts whomever to put what in the paper or whatever on social media. A law enforcement officer was in charge of the shelter. They have access to look into these records and know what is going on. Therefore, it would have been incumbent upon that law enforcement officer to find out before they went ahead and took the donation in the first place, which has us where we are now, waiting for the resolution from the administration to figure out what we're going to do about that. And I just wanted that said on the record as well. Thank you.
I have a question and a suggestion while we're on the topic. While, while the administration is looking to create an ordinance for this matter and accepting donations and things that you consider to the point of both for the councilwomen, if we're accepting donations from businesses, from entities that they are legal, that they are registered, that they are licensed, and so that we are making sure that we're not accepting donations from any unlicensed or illegal entities? And, and then also if they can be required to, if they're making donations, they cannot submit a bid for a contract and things like that? Because we don't want any type of, any insinuations of pre- quote, quid pro quo quotes. And, and any type of, you know, just corruption in that manner and, and make that like just plain black and white in ordinance. Separately, for instances like this with, the ordinance aside, with the dog boarding and things like that, we discussed in our docket review a, a new process going forward with submitting and putting out an RFP for these services because we're spending astronomical amounts of money. And we did not, you know, put it out there to see if we can find cheaper services elsewhere besides the kennel in Yardly. So can you speak to that?
Yes. Dr. Diego actually submitted specifications to purchasing. I revised the specifications and it's already been bid. It's being advertised as we speak. So, yes. And hopefully we will have to use it less than we are using. Hopefully we find somebody that will offer best prices, right? Better prices, but also that we will continue decreasing the number so that we don't need to use those services as much as we have.
Thank you.
But it's advertised right now.
Thank you. And we also ask that it be revised in the resolution to reflect that the money for the two hundred forty-six thousand four hundred dollars to specify the timeframe in which this is for, which in, if you read through, is for August twenty twenty-four to December twenty twenty-four. Just to specify that on this front page or somewhere in the title so that people understand that this is separate from what we had already allocated, which in before was four hundred ninety-six thousand and more, which is separate from this. So that it's not confused that we paid for the whole twenty twenty-four with that. And then this is in addition to that because the wording is kind of throwing people off with the emergency payment. So we also talked about the language there. We know this is an emergency basis for emergency dog boarding, but this payment, I don't believe, is an emergency in itself. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, it's, it's not an emergency in itself. It's just that the services were not procured because we are thinking that we, at this point, we would have already be occupying the kennel in Columbus. But that was not the case. So we actually, we need to pay the bills, right? And we cannot just go now and procure the services when we are, we already encumbered. We already owe them, right? So it's really not an emergency, but money is that we need to pay services that were provided already and that we need to pay it. But we do use the kennel in Yardly as an emergency service because we are overcrowded. And I, I have to say, I, right now we have ninety-two dogs and I need to really thank Dr. Diego for the effort because this is the lowest population that we had at the shelter for over a year, in over a year. And I know, having been there before, that it takes a lot of effort to do that. So kudos to Mr., to Dr. Diego. But that, that's basically it regarding that. So I don't know what language you would like to have in this resolution because we will have to do it now. I'm not sure if it will be a substantial change just to fix that. But I am not sure what was this called, a docket preview in terms of the language.
I mean, if the language is appropriate, then I'm fine with that. But to just specify in one of the whereas is that this is for August to December twenty twenty-four.
Okay. So that would be just a correction. Can we do that on the floor?
Council Vice President?
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes, you would need a motion for that purpose.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Thank you. So I think to, to also cure what you're looking for is that it would say, in, in listening to what the BA was saying, "Resolution authorizing an emergency payment to Yardly Animal Kennels Incorporated, which was awarded for emergency dog boarding for the City of Trenton Animal Shelter from blank date to blank date in an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred dollars." You would omit the "on" and "emergency" basis. It would just be for emergency dog boarding services in the city. Again, from the dates in an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred dollars.
I agree with that.
Can I have a motion to amend Resolution twenty-five oh thirty-five to reflect "Resolution authorizing an emergency payment to Yardly Animal Kennels, Inc., which was awarded for emergency dog boarding services for the City of Trenton Animal Shelter" from, what were the dates? Council Vice President?
August twenty twenty-four to December twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. From August twenty twenty-four to December twenty twenty-four in an amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred dollars.
Councilwoman, are you making that motion now?
Yes, that's what I said.
Oh, okay. You said, can I have a motion?
Yeah, I'm making it.
Understood. Is there a second?
Second.
Noted.
Thank you.
Motion second. Councilwoman, roll call, Council Vice President Edwards. My apologies.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Amended to include the dates and language as listed.
And this could go to consent agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Last question for you guys. Twenty-five dash zero three six. Councilwoman Feliciano?
Thank you, Council Vice President. So it's not, it's not a question. This is easy. I'm glad to see this being done. I did serve as the library liaison two cycles ago and we talked about getting this emergency ramp and everything done. So I'm glad to see that it is happening. Thank you so much for looking after the library and for the work that you have done to take care of the library with the many repairs and everything that they needed. This is going to be good for those that, that need to access it. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Williams?
Council Vice President, thank you. I just want to echo what my colleague just stated. This is sorely needed and thank you for making it happen. And just wanted to add in for the future, if this could come up, discussion, if it hasn't already on library board. Because parking is very much a premium over there and there's not a lot of parking. So a lot of times folks have to park behind the building. If we can make sure that the lines are maintained for parking spaces and also add additional lighting, particularly for nights, once it gets to dusk, because that back area, it's a little, it's not sketchy, but it's needed, but it definitely needs more lighting than it has now. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your services.
Madam Vice President, I want to say something regarding the animal shelter. All of the efforts that we have put together in the last months to find placement for these thirty-one dogs or more is not just me. I have to thank the staff because without them, I'm nothing. The animal control officers, the laborers, the animal attendants. Then we have the administrator people that are answering phone calls. Sometimes we are overwhelmed with the amount of phone calls during the week and during the weekends. All of those people. And I want to thank all of the organizations that are helping us, the community that is helping us to promote these animals. We had over a thousand shares, this is what I've been told, on social media about the dogs. So it is a effort. It's a group effort, not just me. But I want to say that.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Next on the list, twenty-five dash zero three eight. Oh, I'm sorry. Can we put zero three six on a consent agenda?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Zero three eight?
Council Vice President?
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Thank you. Quick question. Could you introduce yourself? I'm sorry.
Good evening, Council. Sean Sample, Director of Water and Sewer.
Thank you. Director Sample, this new Ford that we're looking to get, is this truck going to be equipped with GPS system?
At this time, the sewer plant, we doesn't, we don't have that system on, on theirs as yet. But in the future, we plan to.
Okay.
Add, add the tracking devices.
Okay. And on all the vehicles that, that staff utilize, where are we now with the GPS tracking in it? Like for the, the meter repair people, the meter readers, do, are all of their vehicles equipped with GPS trackers? All of them?
Except for vehicles under, four new vehicles that we just brought, we just got in on the water side. They, they, we be scheduling them within the next month or so.
Okay. All right. So when we meet again down the line, every, all of them will have?
Water and sewer. I'm hoping that by, before the, the spring.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any more questions?
You can go to consent. Thank you.
Thank you.
If we don't have any more, I do actually have a question, not for you, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Sample. That before we move on to the consent agenda, we only had two of the appointing members for the zoning board applications for the zoning boards show up today. So should we amend this ordinance to exclude the two that were not present?
If, is that directed to me?
Yes, Mr. Garcia, I'm sorry.
Madam Vice President, if you wish to exclude that item from a consent agenda and discuss it, you can appoint those individuals, whether they're present or absent. It's a matter of your order in how you would like to list the alternates listed. The rest of the resolution is, you know, proposed as, proposed as written unless there's any objection to that from the council.
Madam Vice President?
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Just a quick question. On this resolution here, we have... Never mind. I, I guess, because I was looking at, I see the three names that we have, right? And then I guess if we take them off that list, then the other ones still fill in for the other places. So we're only actually looking for what's here. So I guess the determination would be whether or not, which one would fill the, a regular member position? And then who would bounce to the alternate, alternate position? So I don't know if that would be up for discussion or not. I don't, I'm not sure exactly how that would work.
Council Vice President?
Councilwoman Williams?
So just as a point, I would believe we, our positions, two applicants did come tonight. And I, if I might be forward to make a recommendation based on the questions answered and background on resume and so forth and commitment, I'd like to suggest that Mrs. Vanita Kapahi serve as the four-year regular member. Make Mr. Michael Hurtado sing, fill the position of the first alternate. And without knowing what happened to Mr. Mattson, who does have a strong resume himself, and then also Aneed Sanchez, perhaps we could appoint both of them to alternate two, alter three at a later date. So Mr. Garcia could ascertain, you know, if they're still, assuming that they're still committed to serving on zoning board, it'd be more appropriate to have them as further alternates in case for the future, if something happens and someone needs to leave for whatever reason, then we do have extra alternates.
Okay. So I would suggest that we make those decisions now before moving on to the consent. So do we have a motion to add Vanita Kapahi to a four-year regular member for a term ending in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight? And for Michael Hurtado as a first alternate, two-year term ending in, on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six?
So moved?
Second.
Just for clarification purposes, are you still also adding Aneed Sanchez to the remaining alternate position as well as Mr. Mattson? And in what order might they be?
I would feel comfortable. It'd be much better had they come to the meeting. But given that this is sort of an emergency situation because of a quorum, if we might add them as the alternates, depending on what conversation you have to them, if they're still committed to this position.
I can comment to that if, if it's okay, Madam Vice President.
Go ahead.
I can say that, I can safely say that the individuals that I contacted and I was successful in contacting all listed, they were all, they all did express their interest. And whether they could come today or not, we did have one individual who was here. She may have been pulled away. Ms. Sanchez, the other individuals did all express interest.
Okay. Then perhaps Ms. Sanchez should be the, the second alternate and Mr. Mattson, the third, since Ms. Sanchez did come tonight.
If that's agreeable with the board and you want to restate the motion?
Yes, please. Do you want me to read it, ma'am? Okay. Make a motion to appoint Ms. Vanita Kapahi to the regular member position for the Trenton Zoning Board of Adjustment, four-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. For first alternate, for a two-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, Mr. Michael Hurtado. For alternate number two, a two-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, Aneed Sanchez. And then alternate number three, for a two-year term that's ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six, would be Mark Mattson.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Roll call. I'm sorry.
Madam Vice President?
Second discussion. Go ahead.
Just, just, just so we're clear, like I don't have a problem doing this, but I know that we all made it a point to say everybody had to be present. And we, and when we did it with the Rent Stabilization Board, we held a spot until Corey McNair was able to come before us cause he wasn't able the first time to come. So if we're gonna do this and hold true to what we said, I think that we need to hold off on Mr. Mark Mattson. And he can come up, because you have enough for a quorum to have the meeting. I think that we move with what we have, cause Ms. Sanchez was here and announced herself as president, that we move with those and then just wait on that last one.
Madam Vice President?
Councilwoman Frisbee?
I am in total agreement with Councilwoman Feliciano. I think it is just respectful if nothing else. And also so that we are setting a standard. I appreciate all that attended tonight, Ms. Sanchez being here, and even though she had to leave for whatever reason, I think we should give Mr. Mark Mattson the opportunity to at least show up.
Okay.
I agree.
I would concur, thank you for that correction, ma'am.
Madam Vice President, with that being said, the matter was motioned in second. I can either call a roll or if the individual motion, Councilwoman Williams, would you like to withdraw that motion?
Yeah, may I withdraw that motion and with revision, remove Mr. Mark Mattson from the alternate number three position, please.
And would you like to make a motion, restate it once again with what you'd, with what you would like?
Sure, sir, thank you. Make a motion to appoint Ms. Vanita Kapahi to the Trenton Zoning Board of Adjustment as a regular member for a four-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-eight. Appointing Mr. Michael Hurtado to Trenton Zoning Board of Adjustment as alternate number one for a two-year term ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six. And finally, appointing Ms. Aneed Sanchez to the Trenton Zoning Board of Adjustment for alternate two term, for a two-year term ending on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-six.
And is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Thank you, roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg? Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. And would that matter be placed on consent agenda for approval after this?
Yes.
Thank you. And with that, Madam President, if you would like to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening, and if you'd like me to list those resolutions, or are we able to state that it is now the, all resolutions on the, on the docket in their entirety?
No, I would like to list them all out.
Certainly, would you like me to recite it, would you?
You can.
No problem. For a motion to approve consent agenda consisting of resolutions twenty-five dash oh-two-eight, oh-three-zero, oh-two-seven, oh-four-one, oh-four-two, oh-two-nine, oh-three-one, oh-three-two, oh-three-three, oh-three-four, oh-three-five, oh-three-six, oh-three-seven, oh-three-eight, oh-three-nine, and oh-fourty.
Mr. Garcia, oh-three-zero was tabled for the next meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies, that was oh-thirty, correct?
Yes.
With the exception of oh-thirty, the numbers listed, if there's a motion to approve that consent agenda?
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Garcia, you could call to roll?
Certainly. Just noting my motions here. Roll, excuse me, roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg? Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. On to ordinances.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Madam Vice President?
Councilwoman Feliciano?
I'm sorry, just for clarity, we did not include twenty-five oh-fourty in that, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, we had, however, that would require a, that is to go to executive session, my apologies.
Thank you. Catching that.
In fact, to make things clean, I'll take another motion to approve consent agenda with the exclusion of twenty-five, resolutions twenty-five dash thirty and twenty-five dash forty.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, roll call. Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. And with that being said, on to ordinances at this time. Ordinances for first reading and introduction, ordinance twenty-five dash zero-zero-four, calendar year twenty-twenty-five, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap-manc NJSA forty-a colon four dash four forty-five fourteen in the amount of seven million one hundred and ninety-three thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Hearing non-roll call. Councilwoman, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg? Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero-zero-five, an ordinance establishing the appointment, duties, responsibilities, and functions of city council member liaisons to certain boards and commissions of the city of Trenton. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Any discussion?
Who moved a second?
Madam Vice President?
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Thank you. So I just wanna, wanna say thank you for putting this together. However, okay. So when it comes to the duties of the liaisons and as it pertains to the boards and everything, I believe that it would be that they go to their designated meetings, they would sit in, they would listen, they would be there to answer, I guess, any questions that may have, that may pertain to the council that the board would have. But the requirements here that you have about providing a verbal report during a, that we're creating a whole other section limited to five minutes. Each board has a chair and each board has their agendas and their minutes. I went and looked on the city's website under boards and commissions. And so as I looked at each one, there is a link there that has the minutes and the agendas. The library board, however, it has the minute, the meeting dates and times posted, but no minutes are there. But everything, and the rent stabilization board, once they meet, the agenda and everything is already established online. The ethics boards, they need to meet the agenda and minutes link is already set up online. I know that you wanted something for, you know, communication with the public, but the public can just simply look online and look at the links and see the agendas and the minutes, or they can even go to the meetings themselves to be an active participant to see or express concerns. I do think that if there is something noting the council's attention, then during civic comment, the council person could then speak at that time to bring it forward to council. Even if they were so inclined to have the chair of the board forward minutes to the clerk to have it dispersed to the council so that we could look at it and see that. But I don't think that we need an ordinance that would dictate this for us. Additionally, Mr. Garcia is following through on what council, former council vice president Figueroa Kattonberg and I have spoken to him about with regards to something that I saw in Hopewell Township when I went and visited. There's a display board that is there, that it's electronic, that displays the council members, their names, their contact information, the various boards, when they meet, who the board members are, how to contact. Mr. Garcia is in the process now of getting the TV to have put downstairs in the, getting to, thank you, downstairs as we have discussed, to have that displayed. Also, we could maybe talk to the administration, there could be one placed in the atrium area so that people could see that as well. Again, I don't think that, that we need to, I don't think we need an ordinance for this. I just, I think that the minutes and everything are posted. I think that the liaison and going to the meeting, if you have a concern or something about it, if there's something key that we need to know, then civic comment is adequate time enough to let the council body know, or even shooting emails to say, hey, here's what's going on with this and the like. Thank you.
So just wanna take a minute to address that, because this is my ordinance, so I just wanna answer any questions that anyone may have. So this ordinance isn't to define any type of mandatory requirements for council, it's just simply to define what a council liaison is to our boards and commissions. We do not have anything in our ECOs that defines what a liaison's roles from city councils to our boards and commissions are. So this is simply just to provide what that process looks like. And not just for this council, but for any members elected to this council beyond us, beyond our terms. So these are suggestions, these are what the roles and responsibilities are of a liaison. We are not just in these roles just to hold titles and do nothing with them. So I felt like though we needed to establish some type of definition of what our roles are as liaisons to these, or to these boards and commissions. So, and then the responsibilities, it's not mandatory and we can actually put that language in there that is not required to provide any type of verbal report or anything of that matter. It's simply a suggestion so that we can have a time slot separate from our civic comments because we only get five minutes for our civic comments. Sometimes it's simply not enough time for us to fit in our general comments as well as our liaison roles, any information that we feel the need to provide from our experiences with attending these meetings. So it's simply just a suggestion of granting up to five minutes for anyone to deliver a report if they so choose to, if they have one. If you don't, you can simply pass on the matter, on the matter, and we can go to the next council person. If no one has any significant updates, that is totally fine. But this was in context to just define our roles more. And I thought that respectfully, as we are cutting back on our meetings, that we can pick up a little bit more, since we're not gonna be here for a few hours on Thursdays, that we can define a little bit more of what our roles are as city council members, just respectively and respectfully.
Council Vice President?
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
To that point, I just want to draw attention to Section Seven, Compliance and Accountability. I mean, you saying that we're not expected to do these things, but then number two says, failure to perform liaison duties, including the submission of reports, may result in reassignment by the council president. So if that being in there and you saying we are not mandated, this is merely suggestion or, you know, as being appointed liaisons to these boards, like then that's a contradiction of what you just stated.
And which one up down here, compliance? So that was suggested, and if there are any discrepancies with that, we can certainly discuss that. So just reiterating, this is defining our roles. So we're not in these roles to just hold titles and say we do these things, but we're actually expected to do these things and at least attempt to attend the meetings, or if not, then we can listen to the recordings, we can read the minutes and what have you. But it kinda makes the role, if they exist, kind of obsolete if we don't have any definition of what we're supposed to be doing. But to your point, if that is too extreme, we can definitely amend that.
Yeah, I would agree that moving forward, if we were to adopt this ordinance and agree, make, have an agreement in this ordinance moving forward, that that would be something that should be struck from this ordinance.
Okay. Council Vice President? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. So I'm glad you provided some information on the genesis of it. To my knowledge, I don't think anyone is having a title, not doing anything with this. I'm not sure what that means actually, cause I know, at least with what I've been doing with TDA, I'm at every single meeting. I assume all my colleagues are at their meetings too. But to me, it does seem particularly Section Seven very punitive to have that, that a council president could reassign people for what they're doing. But also in order to, if it's just a friendly report, hey, this is what's going on with library board, this is what's going on with TDA, this is what's going on, you know, with any of the boards. I think that, you know, that's a discussion to, hey, we need to be, you know, more informative to council, more informative to the public what's actually happening. But to Councilwoman Feliciano's original statement, many of these boards, if not all these boards have public minutes. I know with TDA, it's an open public meeting except for executive session. So I don't see, except for highlights, different events coming up, messages to get out to the public. I don't necessarily see that a report has a strong function. But also if it's something where you believe that the council should be telling a little bit more what's going on with our boards, I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I think we do need to expand the five-minute limit on city council members to ten minutes as it used to be. Because if we are having less meetings, that extra time does give us an opportunity to talk about a plethora of issues, including current crises going on in the city or announcements that we wish to make to the public. But also, you know, with that, I think you may wanna step back and have a discussion because I think what you're doing is introducing a topic that is needed. But I don't believe an ordinance at this time is necessary for this. But I very much appreciate the spirit, what you want to do and what you're suggesting to us because I think that would be an example of good government, just I don't think we need to have an ordinance for it at this present time. Without further discussion, ma'am.
Okay. Before we move on to anyone else, I just wanted to address that. I'm not implying in any way, shape, or form that this current council is holding titles and not doing anything. Just reiterating what I said before, any future, any past, you know, I've noticed that, you know, some of these roles have been obsolete in regards to other members in the past. So going forward in the future, that we can establish what exactly a liaison is and supposed to look like would be proper governance, to your point. And I wanna say it's kinda disturbing that TDA doesn't have minute meetings, minutes or meeting recordings to their meetings. And to that point, their meetings are on Tuesdays at ten AM and they are public. I wanna say Trenton Housing Authority is twelve PM on Wednesdays. Public, however, many people are at work. We're calling these public meetings, but the public is not able to attend mostly because of scheduling conflicts. So this is to, for us to be able to have an opportunity for those who so choose to be more informative on our platforms here, because at five-thirty in the evening or, you know, seven-thirty in the evening, when we're going over our reports from our experiences as a liaison, it would be helpful for the public to be able to hear what happened during those meetings. And we can, to Councilwoman Feliciano's point, point them in the direction of where they could go to find the minutes and meetings on the city's website.
I would, if I just might respond, I totally agree with you. And that's something I think maybe very soon we should require all the boards and commission to publicly publish their minutes and meetings and carry their minutes, and I think that would solve a lot of this.
And actually, to that point, it would be great for the liaisons, for us to be able to facilitate these types of conversations. So when we look on the website and we see these things are not on there, our roles as liaisons could reach out to the chair of that board and request that that information be updated and make sure we're liaisoning with the administration to make sure it's getting on the website as well. So that is a perfect example of this ordinance.
And may I ask, going forward, if we have a discussion about posting on the website too, to make that more efficient? Cause I think what you're saying, I'm on board with, but we need to have much more rapid response than we currently do.
Agreed. Thank you. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Council Vice President. So one, I wanna thank you for putting together this ordinance, because I love the idea of having something, a record. So thank you for that one. And also to Councilwoman Feliciano's point, you've already said it is not, I am not in agreement that we should be reporting out on these, but in actually, contrary, I think it should be the reverse. Giving, maybe we ask them for a opportunity at these boards, if they, if we have- at these boards, if they, if we have information that we want to dispense, that is given to us with regards to the concerns that we are hearing back. That might be, um, a different way to go that we're not, because the boards that I sit on, yes, I, I give my feedback, but there are times when I think there should be allotted an opportunity for, um, us as liaisons to report back what we may be hearing from the public. What they have to say, what they are not getting because they're not here. So maybe we want to reverse that and say that, you know, as opposed to us reporting out to here, that we're actually giving our feedback at those meetings so that, um, they know what's going on because they're not in the room here when we're having our council meetings. And I think that was it on it, but I do pre, I sincerely appreciate this. I think it is, um, a great idea and giving us a roadmap for going forward for those who will come behind us. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Council Vice President.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. To that end also, um, we have subcommittees that we meet. Um, and we need to have, to, to that end, something put in place as far as the subcommittees go, because I know that, um, I have reported out to, to council, um, when I've sat in subcommittee meetings to make sure that every council member knew what we talked about, what we met about, and just to, you know, just a basic overview of what was discussed. I think if we're going to line this up, then we kind of line that up in order with subcommittees and what we are supposed to do within that realm, right? Because some of us, we go and then some of us know what's happening. Um, and others may not necessarily know until the presentation is brought forward or something like that. But minutes should be taken, um, e, at those ma, at those meetings and given to council. So I think we need to kind of move in, in that direction.
Yes, uh, thank you for bringing that up. That was definitely in my next comments. I have, uh, started an ordinance and it's in drafts and, um, Mr. Koloji should have that is along with, um, some other examples from other municipalities, uh, subcommittees from other city councils. I had sent a couple of e, examples. And so, um, waiting to get back just to make sure that the legal ramifications or legal parameters are correct. The language is correct according to our New Jersey, um, guidelines and our Faulkner Act and things like that. So, um, um, just making sure that it's all lined up. And so hopefully we'll see that ordinance soon and we'll discuss the subcommittees that we want to establish beyond the economic development one that we have unofficially established. So, um, that is coming down the pike.
Council VP.
Uh, Councilman Harrison.
Can we just make it mandatory that all minutes are posted? Make it mandatory that each board would make it mandatory that it be posted on the city's website? Then we can move from there.
Um, maybe our, our attorney can advise us on that. But it does, because each board and commission has their own ordinances, we may have to go one by one to amend that, to make it mandatory for them to, um, report the minutes and the meetings to be put on the website.
Council Vice President.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. To Councilman Harris's point, that's, that's what I was saying initially. I went on our city website and I went under boards and commission and looked at every single one. And just about all of them have links for the meeting dates and times, the agenda, and some have the minutes. So yeah, if we have it where for those that don't, we require it, it's there, then we've done our part. It's there. If there's something highlighted that we would want to talk about, um, at the, at the council meeting, then again, we could do that in civic comment. But then if we want to talk about, do we think about increasing that talk time for civic comment for those that were wanted to 10 minutes? Then we don't have to put another item on the agenda. I don't know. But the, the stuff is already there. It's, it's, it's already online. And then to Councilwoman Frisbee's point also about, you know, the concerns of the people at, at those meetings, right? That they're telling us, you know, what's going on.
Council VP, Vice President.
Councilwoman Feliciano, Frisbee.
Thank you. So in, I, I lost my whole train of thought. I was thinking about that. The no show, the, um, subcommittees reporting out, oh, that's what it was. With the liaisons, like we have, as council, we, we just established, there are some who have, uh, not put their links on, um, on our website. Again, I go back to the liaisons, you know, because everybody's not checking our website. Um, even the, uh, these committees apparently, to have the liaison, to have that communication so that we can say either, you know, great job, we want to let you know that we, we see your information on, um, our site and we, we appreciate that, or we don't see your information on the site. Can you, that can you, would you, um, please update your site to be a link to us? So that again, that is, is bringing that, that volleyball communication back and forth. And so it gives us a little bit more, again, this is something they may not even be aware of. And also maybe even asking with the TDA, if they can also have meetings, when others can be, uh, and attended. Those of us who do have nine to five jobs, it would be, it's, it's nice to read the meeting, to read the minutes, but it's also nicer if you have a opportunity to have us a, your voice, your concerns heard in the actual live meeting and then it's not something that you have to do afterwards. You may forget about it, life happens, da, 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 da. But maybe if they need to have a second commit, another meeting, most of us are, again, we are working. And again, I get those emails constantly and I have to decline because I have a nine to five job and I cannot sit in their meetings when I would love to, um, because I can't. That, that would be stealing time and I don't do that. So thank you.
Council President, Vice President.
Councilwoman Williams.
I just, just because I know I'll, I'll hear it once they, uh, some folks watch the meeting on YouTube. Uh, that is definitely something for, uh, D, TDA to consider. Uh, I can share that point of view almost definitely. Uh, but I know with some of the board members, uh, that they've run businesses, uh, it's easier for them to have it at that time of day. But I do think personally that it should be spread out so at least some meetings are when, uh, folks can attend after five o'clock. But that their own business running is a consideration for many of them.
Thank you. Councilman Harrison.
Yep. Council VP, um, but the first meeting of the month, could we have, uh, Mr. Garcia list the boards and the times, the dates and the times at the meetings? So that anybody who's online could say, hey, I'm interested in when the Trenton Downtown Association meets. Here's the meeting and here's the time. So we're letting you know.
Yes, and in essence of that, that's exactly the functionality that we're trying to establish here. So if Mr. Garcia, um, doesn't, isn't the one that does do it, we would have our section on here under presentations. It would be slash liaison reports. And each one of us, according to the boards that we're assigned to, would be able to give that information out at that time. So if that's something that you feel like we should do, I think that is definitely a good idea.
Council Vice President.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
I think too, also annually, because when we're figuring out the designation of, when we're looking at the, the terms and all this other kind of stuff of these boards and commissions and stuff, the clerk should automatically receive the rosters from the board chairs of who the current members are, their terms and the meeting days, the meeting times. Like this is something that the clerk can request from all the board, you know what I mean? All of the people across the board. So we know annually, okay, we have these many people, these seats are due. So then that way we could also be on top of the reappointments and stuff as these boards and everything are expiring and things like that, um, these positions as well. But again, these are things that can be given directly to Mr. Garcia. Um, and then he can have his staff prepare whatever's needed, as Councilman Harrison said. So then that way we all see exactly what's going on. And then maybe the request could be made of the boards and stuff of those that can to have virtual meetings. I mean, because there's a lot of them that are virtual. So if it's not a heavy lift, that they also, um, add that to their meeting thing. So when people are at work, people can tune in virtually and listen to what's going on. If they're on break or whatever, put earbuds in if they wanted to listen and, you know what I mean? And, and still be a part of the process.
Yes. And so all of these changes has to be established on paper. Um, because in essence, if it's not the next council members that join this board or will not follow that, they won't even know about it. So if it's codified in our ordinances or as an ordinance, then going forward, everyone will follow that same protocol, including the clerk's office. So to that point, being at the clerk's office is under our purview. Most of these boards and commissions was established by either city council or the administration. So I feel like, uh, you know, a lot of these things falls under our purviews to establish these types of policies and protocols and procedures. So that's what this is to attempt to do. So.
I think we need to hold this till we can have further discussion on it and figure out what this looks like.
I agree. This didn't need to move forward from today, but definitely needed to be a discussion that we all needed to have. So we can have a clear understanding of everyone's ideas. So, um, I would motion myself to, uh, table this.
Uh, table or, or if the, uh, attorney decides to withdraw, but I think we need to table it. Robert's wasn't her.
Okay.
That's correct. Uh, you have a motion and a second if the individual who motioned would like to withdraw that motion in order to motion to table this, that's fine. If not, then I'll go through the roll for the, uh, motion and second on the floor.
I have a motion to table this.
You withdrawing your previous motion?
Withdraw the motion. Okay.
And motioning to table this until?
Can we say just to allow time, the first meeting of March?
Motion to table indefinitely?
Until March.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Until March 4th.
Until March 4th. Thank you. So it's a motion to table until March 4th? Is there a, excuse me, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So it's moved by Edwards, second by Frisbee. Roll call. Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano. Councilwoman Figueroa Katenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Motion carried. Matter is tabled until March? I said, I heard fourth, correct? Thank you. Tabled until March 4th. Okay. Moving on. At this time, Madam Vice President, I believe we've reached the point of public comment. If I could have the public comment clipboard, please. And to the public, public comment will be five minutes for each individual. Madam Vice President, we have six individuals listed for public comment this evening. You may address any item you wish for this public comment. The council is not obligated to respond. The first individual I have listed for public comment is Charles, is that Lewis? Thank you, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Charles Lewis, 198 Pennington Avenue.
Thank you.
Uh, again, I'm here again for the same two situations. The last time I was here in November, when I presented, uh, I see today that we kind of moving forward with the resolution as far as 25 dash three, what's that, uh, 28? As far as, you know, residents in the city being able to purchase properties that's next to, to their, to their property, you know, being a, the taxpaying citizen. And also, you know, what's the time limit that after this is resolved right now? Because it's resolved tonight. I know you can't answer that right now. But is this resolved tonight moving forward? That I'll be able to purchase this property and go forward with my project of one of the city? I got a lot of plans on what I want to do with that, even though it was a controversial with the church next door. And I know only got, I got four minutes left. Uh, that was my issue from the start, being that, you know, a lot of these churches that's in the city of Trenton, they don't live in the city of Trenton, neither are they paying taxes. And I'm living right next to some that I'm, I'm taking my hard earned money. I'm retired from the city. I went back to work and now I'm back to work again. So 28 years with the city. And I own this property. And all I'm asking is that we can move forward so we can do what I, so I can do what I gotta do with this, this lot. You know, it's been sitting there over the last six years I've been dealing with this. And, and furthermore added on that, uh, November I was here, right before Christmas, I presented the, the, uh, the judgment from the city, I meant from the Superior Courthouse about the damages to my property, the default judgment. I haven't heard anything from the lawyers. I even presented it last time I was here. I'm not getting no answers from anybody, not the clerk office. My gentleman right there, he, he can witness that I come there and I'm checking on, you know, if I was behind on my taxes, they, they act aggressively. So being that now I got damaged to my house, already took care of the problem, but it's still owed to me what the damages were from that city property. I, I haven't had any light on that situation. But I did get a light, my most important one, I don't care about the money. I care about this resolution that, that's getting passed so I can move forward. So that's all I want to say is, is, is I appreciate if this, this thing going through like it's supposed to because it's giving hardworking citizens in the city of Trenton an opportunity to, to progress their property and all these people coming from the outside. And they're not taking care because I'm in the middle of three rental properties. Uh, two on one side and the other one on the other side. You know, they don't take care of their properties. They come near the first of the month, you see them with that little cap on their head. I'm not being prejudiced, but that's all I see. You know what I mean? And they out, they don't clean, they don't take care of their yards. They don't do anything. I'm the one that cleaned 198 Pennington Avenue up into Union Baptist Church and the Antioch Baptist Church. The minister of Antioch Church doesn't even come out and clean up until he's getting ready to do his sermon on Sunday and then they clean up in the front. But all through the course of the week, I'm taking care of Pennington Avenue. And I got pictures. But I'm just glad that this is, this is getting resolved now with this issue, with this, this, this resolution for us to move forward as, as good citizens, taxpayer of the city, to, to get some of these, these properties that's been taken away from us and don't give us no opportunities. So a, a, and that's all I have to say. I just appreciate y'all, y'all. I, it's a yay, I, I, because I heard it's a yay, 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 yay for this. And I hope this is where it's going to be. You laughing because you know I'm dead serious. All right? And I appreciate y'all. All right?
Mr. Lewis, before you go, can you give us the address to that property you're referring to?
That, it is 196 Pennington Avenue.
The one that was damaged was your property that you live in?
My property is 198, which already, I, I sent the judgment. It's already in the clerk's office. And, and like I said, my minutes up, like, like I said, I mean, i- if, why does it take so long to, for them to take care of issues that was their problem?
Yes.
You know what I mean? Like I said, if I was behind on my taxes, they coming aggressively, any, anybody, that's what they do. Okay? So I'd appreciate if y'all can do what y'all can do about that. But my main concern is that property. The money, I don't care. All right? And when I get it, I get it. But my main source is six, five, four.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Um, Mr. Garcia, before we proceed, I just want to be mindful of, of being respectful to all ethnic groups, religious groups, and please avoid any anti-Semitic comments, please. Thank you.
Robin Washington.
Good evening. My name is Robin Sonoria Washington. I live at 447 West Hanover Street. I say my whole name because there is another Robin Washington that lives in the city that's six months younger than me, so not to be confused. I'm a taxpayer and a resident of Trenton. I am retired from middle management of the state of New Jersey. of the state of New Jersey. I'm also a retired U.S. veteran. For the past five and a half years since September of twenty nineteen, I've been trying to acquire property at four forty-four and four forty-six West Hanover Street directly across the street from my house. That is a vacant lot. There were two houses there. Uh, well, on the left side was a two-family home and on the right side was a single-family home. They uh, were destroyed in a fire over thirty-five years ago. Um, the property was not rehabilitated. The landlords or the owners of those properties tore those properties down. I submitted a application to purchase these properties in September of twenty nineteen. I was told um, that I would have to buy both lots at the time because they were were both vacant. I submitted my application. Uh, as you can see, the I completed the application. I submitted uh, a bank statement because at the time it was required that I had to show proof that I could afford to buy both lots. I complied with the ordinance at that time. I was interviewed by two city employees who reviewed the application in front of me and stated that I could build on a property because it was not large enough to be a quote, "commercial property." And they also informed me that my application and proof of my ability to purchase these properties would have to be submitted to city council for their approval. I complied with everything that was requested um, with my initial proposal. And I've been coming here to City Hall and speaking with Mr. Daniel Roach four or five times a year. Also calling over the phone since twenty nineteen to find out the status of this property. Each time I spoke to Mr. Roach, his response was, oh, there's a city council next, meeting next week. Uh, they'll get give you an answer. Over the years, I've been told that, you know, uh, with the Rehabilitation Act, of Rehabilitation of Trenton, that certain areas have been rezoned. I was not given any further instruction whether to submit a different application or reapply. The copy of the application that I just presented is the application that shows on the bottom of the uh, request to purchase where it says internal use. It has an estimate assessed value for four forty-four West Hanover Street at five thousand seven hundred dollars and estimated uh, assessed value of four four six, the connecting property at five thousand seven hundred dollars. I've been able, and I do still have that money to purchase those properties. And I just want to know, why is it taking so long? When I started this process in twenty nineteen, my bank statement, which is the last page, will show the September twenty nineteen date that I submitted this whole application, which the original is on file here. Why is it taking so long just to get this property approved? I spoke to your director uh, two weeks ago. And he basically told me that it's homeownership that the city is going for. And I get that. But there's two properties directly across the street from the home that I own, that I live in, that I want to build two apartment houses to provide housing. Because, you know, there was something put out by the governor's office a few months ago about a shortage of housing. I'm willing to invest in the city because I live in the city. I believe in the city. Basically, that's it. I'm running out of time. I have a lot more to say. But I just want to know what is the holdup since twenty nineteen of getting this property approved? And now these new ordinances are suggesting that only people who want to buy, as I was told by uh, the gentleman, uh, what is his name? From the housing department, that homeownership is what the move is now. So I'm trying to still invest in the city. Trying to still acquire these properties and I'm trying to figure out, why me? Why can't I get these properties that I've been trying to get?
That is your time, ma'am.
The last five and a half years.
Thank you.
For your time and your attention. Have a great day.
James Washington. Understood. Victor Irazari.
It's a pleasure again to be in front of you again. Uh, happy, uh, what is it, uh? Black History Month, all right?
Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Oh, my name is Victor Irazari, nineteen Moreland Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. And don't forget to, don't forget about the original police laborers, so-called slaves of fifteen fifty-five up to sixteen nineteen. That after sixteen nineteen, that's when it started getting recognized as having slavery in America. Now, uh, listening to one more, um, I like to be in front of this board, uh, so, uh, and anybody else that was coming in from out of Trenton, uh, saying otherwise, uh, disapprove of. Uh, another thing that I was saying, that, you know, the lady just left us standing about uh, housing. What I got recently was, uh, that, um, there's no more auction in Trenton. Uh, once you are interested in purchasing a house, you get the house address information submitted to the to the city, city council, whoever. And then they'll get back to you. And uh, you know, you you do not have to reside there as an owner. And if that's your intent, then you will have to be, you know, you have to be, uh, whatever the time is, three years, four years, five years, you have to live there for that amount of time. The real intention is to flip that house as soon as possible. That was recently. I don't know. Okay, so I'm gonna move on. Uh, uh, again, I said last time I was here that, uh, to have true police reform, you need a social reform and then with, uh, I believe that shortly, uh, say in a few months, six months summertime, uh, crime, the crimes go multiply or get, uh, it's going to increase in Trenton and across the United States because, uh, President Trump, which I call the Great White Owl, uh, has dict, uh, has, uh, declared war on the cartel. That means there's going to be inflation on drugs, heroin, cocaine. And the drug war, uh, once, uh, they have been declared a terrorist group, the cartels of Mexico, I guess, across the planet Earth. Once that happens, of course, it's gonna be wars from the American side towards Mexico and otherwise and within themselves. So inflation on drugs is gonna go up. Crimes go increase. And then with, um, uh, other countries are, uh, having an anti-American view due to the immigration roundup that's going on right now. Um, it's gonna get worse. Now, my thing is that, uh, these houses where I see a lot of young brothers, what I call soldiers, but young brothers standing in front of, doing whatever it is they do. Uh, I say those houses right there, which is abandoned, most of, most of them are abandoned. That should be sold to city residents that can afford to fix them. When I don't mean, I don't even mean fix them. Buy them, uh, gut them out. Replace the pipes and the wires and the cement, the steps or whatever it is, minimum. And then sell it, then have some, a real rehabber come in. They rehab and they sell it for a higher profit. And that way we can avoid a lot of homelessness. And we could get, uh, our young brothers and sisters off the streets. And, uh, they, if they are doing something illegal, then they can at least do it in that house. If, uh, one of them, uh, is willing to become an owner of the house until the police come and raid them or whatever the situation may be. So, uh, that's my, my, uh, it's not a proposal, but my concern for 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 the time being. Uh, as far as, as far as, uh, I see and I understand that since the eighties, I've been understanding that Trent was, has been, was designated then as a, a city for gent, gentification. And that's when people are moved out. And then the city, uh, or those, the property is upgraded and then people with big money come in and buy those areas. And it's like, at one time when, with no disrespect, when, uh, white people would move out when black people move in, now, black people moving out or there being, uh, what you call it, uh, replays of this place, this place. And then the white people come back in. Now, like you said, no ethnic, you know, I understand what you're saying. But we are not longer, see, racism started, stopped in nineteen eighty-four. Uh, that's something we're not aware of. Racism was out since nineteen eighty-four. What I'm saying is now, it's about the money. It's about the money. Whoever had the money, top dollar, can buy houses, uh, minimum range, minimum range and jack it up a few percentages where we in the city of Trenton can't even get afford, can't afford even the the minimum of buying those houses. It's like a setup. So we are out from jump as a people. Uh, that's my concern for now. Uh, thank you for, uh, listening. Thank you.
Kathy Sweeney.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Kathleen Anne Sweeney, uh, eleven Beatty Street in Trenton. Um, I actually have two issues. I know that you guys can't, um, you know, respond to do anything. But I would just like to put it out there because I am looking for some guidance. Uh, the first issue, very small. We have a corner house um, that has a fence so that we could park into our basically side lot. It's a, it's the garden, basically, is what it is. We are trying, we have been trying to get a sign to say no parking in front of that. The reason being is because we have the bar on the corner um, that there's constant traffic to. And people go into the bar, leave their cars there overnight. Uh, myself and my boyfriend who lives in the house, we both work at Capital Health Regional Medical Center. We're in the crisis center. So we are on call. Cannot get out. We have the police come and tow the cars. I hate doing that because we do work with the Trenton Police on mobile outreaches. So like, okay, again, and I don't want to bother them. But we do have a sign on the fence that says no parking, twenty-four access, twenty-four hour access is required. Just putting it out there to see if anybody in the city can do something with some type of sign not to block the driveway. Also, because of that, we've gotten numerous tickets by parking on the street because we can't get into the driveway. Don't know if you can do anything, just putting it out there. First, that was the first issue. The second issue is, um, every Sunday morning and every Wednesday evening, pretty much, we have a group of preachers that come at the corner of Beatty and, uh, Whittaker. What we have found out through the years, um, is that they do have a permit to preach. Preaching is fine. The way that they preach and what they are saying is unacceptable. Calling women prostitutes if they see their dresses too short or shorts. Talking about the devil. Um, and this makes me very nervous in saying this. The way they do preach, um, the screaming, and I have it, if you'd like to hear it, I have it on my phone. I tried to find out where this, um, authorization has come from. No one in the city of Trenton could tell me saying they never gave a permit to this group. They come before the time that they're allotted. They stay after the time they're allotted. I found out that the permit was finally given, um, by Director Wilson, um, at the Trenton Police Department. I've tried to speak with him on numerous occasions to no avail. If you just get, um, if I can just play one thing for you guys so that you can hear what they say or just the loudness of it. And again, I just don't know what to do. So that's why they said come to city council. So that's what I'm doing and trying to pull my phone up. And of course, it's not working. Anyhow, that's what I had to say. Um, I would just like to try one more time to see if I can play this video. Is my time up yet? Why isn't it playing? Okay, I tried. Anyhow, it's loud, it's abusive. Um, I just don't know what else to do of how we can stop them. If they want to preach, preaching again is fine. But not in the manner that this is happening. They're stopping traffic. Children are crying um, because they go to Fernandez's Grocery and they're after them. They're begging for money. Uh, I just, I just need something to be taken care of. Thanks.
Elijah Dixon.
Hi, good. Hi, good evening, Elijah Dixon. Uh, one thirty-four East Hannover Street, apartment two. And I'm here to speak on behalf of, uh, for docket item number, it was a resolution twenty-five dash zero three zero um, for the contract for the five-year development plan for the UZ. Um, that's my company. And, uh, just wanted to address some of the questions or comments that were referenced with regards to, um, you know, the perception of a conflict of interest. And then uh, once that was, I guess, addressed, uh, there was the question that I believe maybe maybe, uh, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberg brought up and perhaps was Councilwoman uh, Williams with regards to, oh, well, would he still, would he or they still be able to apply for UZ funds, given that they are the consultant for the project? Um, a couple of things just with regards, since I believe that the perceived or perception of conflict of interest was already addressed, tacitly perhaps. Um, you know, TDA members are, uh, you know, even though they're on the board, they're chosen to be on the board because of their, um, you know, they're stakeholders in the city and there are certain grant programs that are available to TDA board members. And it's no, and there's no issue. Um, they're able to apply, receive funding. Um, I actually, uh, had agreed with what, um, the director, uh, listing was saying with regards to, and granted, of course, I'm biased because it's my company. But I'm biased, uh, in that I would imagine that the city, the city would like to have someone who's actually from the city, able to walk onto all different four corners. Because the UZ spans not just downtown, it's Hermitage, it's Clinton, it's it's, 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 uh, North Clinton, South Clinton. Um, San Heagan out, you know, at the liquor store. And these consultants who are putting in proposals and they've gotten dozens of contracts in the city, um, to the tune of millions of dollars. Uh, you know, we put in a contract, I mean, rather, we put in a proposal, finally get, finally get the approval. I've submitted a number of them, by the way, maybe like three or four contracts in the past. And there's always, oh, well, you know, we're satisfied with the value that we're receiving with these other people or, oh, you know, just spending, next time, we finally get a contract. Um, move to hire, uh, uh, a, an honor student from Trent High to help with the outreach. Uh, make the necessary preparations. And so I do not necessarily agree that it should have been, and granted, I'm in no position of power here, so it is what it is. It's already spilled milk. But if it was a matter of, oh, well, you know, can he still, or can they still apply for funds? Um, you know, whether that's yes or no, I would not believe that that was the reasons to table um, the resolution. Um, because, you know, whether it's yes or no, it is what it is. Um, now, whether it is a perceived conflict of interest, I think that that's something definitely, you know, that if it was, then, you know, or like further clarification was needed or warranted, then, okay, fine. But I believe that someone had already addressed and said that, well, and a couple of people said, oh, well, it's it's no. And yet it was still tabled, is what it is. Um, I would just say that, you know, just to provide clarity, this is a Trent-based business. Two employees outside of myself, Trent resident, you know, among one of whom is a senior at Trent High. She's a program assistant, a project assistant. Uh, the, there was two other companies who were, who had put in bids. And if you were to look at, if you were to look at like, like the the cost proposals, the one company who's an engineering company, which respectfully does a number of work with the city, I'm sure it's all good. I mean, it must be. They keep on getting contracts. No shade. The, their, their contract came in maybe like a thousand or five hundred dollars less than what the max contract was. Um, if you look at the, at the cost proposal, fifteen thousand dollars just to have introductory meetings with the directors. Uh, what are we talking about? This is why the city is, is where it is right now because ninety percent of the contracts, and I work with this, with a team of students over at Princeton University, ninety percent of all the city contracts go to companies outside the city. Of the ten percent that actually do go to city companies, the, uh, the percentages that are black owned, women owned, minority owned, even less than that, it's like ten percent of the ten percent. And and then, and then there's a portion of that ten percent which actually And, and then, and then there's a portion of that 10%, which actually just has a PO box in the city, it's not actually a city-owned company. But, you know, here it's, oh, well, and respectfully, um, you know, Councilwoman, uh, Feliciano, oh, well, you know, so what's the grading like? What's the this, is it a conflict of interest? I hear none of that for these 700,000 dollar contracts, 50 million dollar contracts, and granted, I'm not always attending the physical meetings, I do watch online at times, but I just feel that it's, um, you know, it's like, I feel like it's part of the problem, not this particular instance, but that the question as far as like, the perception and desire to go outside of the city for talent.
Sir, that is your time.
Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. Ma- uh, Madam Vice President, those are all the individuals I have for public comment at this time. If it's your wish, you may start with any individual you'd like for civic comment.
Yeah, I'll start alphabetically, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. So I'd like to say this to Mr. Dixon. Thank you for your.
I just wanted to ask a question before I try to speak. If it's still time for public comment, I'd ask to go up and put my name.
Uh, Mr. Garcia.
Ma'am, I'm just going to address the, go ahead.
But, um, sir, uh, ma'am, excuse me, I just wanted to address, sir, please, we do not allow for shout-outs like that. I respect your, I respect your opinion. Ma'am, um, please, going forward, you can kindly approach the clerk to ask for your name to be added to the list. We cannot tolerate, um, shouts across the floor, especially while council members are speaking, as per Robert's rules of order. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
I'll respectfully ask, at what point does the names to, does either the clipboard, my getting the clipboard signify the end of public comment? Or at least individuals being able to sign up, or am I allowing for all individuals to continuously sign up?
Respectfully, we closed public comment and proceeded with this comment for council members, so I just want to say going forward, just respectfully, I, I do respect that you have an opinion and everything, and that, and we would love to hear from you, but moving forward, um, as we're proceeding, please try to address these issues in a more timely manner so that we can get you on the list during a public comment. But once it's closed, we do have to move forward with the meeting.
That was my question only because like I want to go and put my name on this, so I.
That's fine.
Disrespectful time, so technically, when he takes the board, they hear the wrong.
Yes, so ma'am, so as he's still.
That technical, that's real, like through the legislation.
Respectfully, yes, Robert, rules of order does apply here, so going forward, if he is still calling out names, then you can ask him for your name to be added to the list, but if it once is closed, it is closed. Thank you.
When he's still calling out names.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, we have to move forward. Councilwoman Feliciano.
Mr. Garcia, can you restate my, start my time? Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, to Mr. Dixon, I just wanted to catch you because I know you have your little one, um, to be on your way. When, when I asked the question, um, regarding the conflict of interest, I would have asked that if that were anyone else that had owned a business downtown that was looking to do this, because I wanted to know if there were a conflict of interest, because while I am in favor of moving this forward, I just want to make sure that we are all clear, so that if someone else comes or someone else, that we understand the rules of engagement, right? I am all for everyone having their fair share and stake in the city of Trenton. I'm not blind to who occupies what here, or who owns what and everything that is going on, or the percentages, right, as it comes to a certain minority group that's here. So I am not looking to stop anyone that is qualified and capable of owning property or having, um, a study done or doing reports or whatever it is, or engaging in business in the city of Trenton. I am all for it, but again, I have to do my due diligence to make sure that there is no conflict of interest on either way. And so I asked the question because I wanted to know so that, you know, before we say yes, I want any backlash coming from anywhere, did anybody, did anybody any favors or whatever, I just want the legal opinion, yes or no. And that is where I came from, and I would do that for anybody that comes before us to want that, to want the same thing. So I hope that I've cleared that up from my perspective for you. Um, I don't really have too much tonight. Um, yeah, I don't really have too much tonight. I'm just glad to see everybody. Uh, it was a good fruitful meeting. Enjoyed the conversation for, for, for the time that it lasted and deliberated with my colleagues and stuff, because that's what it's all about, right? Us having the conversations and us moving back and forth to move the business of the city forward. So, um, with that being said, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattemberger.
Good evening. Um, so I just wanted to, uh, touch on, we had a really great meeting, um, over the weekend, um, with some community leaders, and, uh, Mayor Reed Gussiara and, um, our police director were invited to this meeting. It was a concern about the ICE situation, how it affects, um, our residents and, and the like. So some good information came out, um, some understanding of what's to be expected, um, what's not to be expected, what the city can and cannot do when it comes to ICE, federal government coming into our communities, what they're looking for, what they're not looking for. Um, and tried to kind of ease some of the panic and some of the, um, misinformation that's out there, some of the videos or photos that are being posted that are not completely accurate. Um, so kudos to those who came. It was, it was a well, um, received and well, um, attended meeting. I know that I did announce that the meeting was going to happen, and I suggested anybody interested, um, to reach out to me as it was undisclosed location, um, to be protective of all those in attendance. Um, and it was, and Councilwoman Feliciano did attend as well, um, and some other community leaders, so I just want to applaud the efforts of the administration for, um, showing up to answer questions of the community, um, with that regard, as we are in uncharted waters, and, you know, we want to make sure that, um, our residents' safety is paramount, um, in front and center, and making sure that we are not interfering or impeding on any, um, federal-level investigations whatsoever. Um, moving forward, uh, again, I just wanted to congratulate all those in the efforts of getting the timestamp dogs adopted. That's a great effort for all those involved, again, Director Minnick Belli, um, you know, for your staff, um, and for allowing the volunteers to operate and, and to do what they do. Um, and it's just, it just speaks volumes to the fact that 35 dogs since January 1st can get adopted out, um, 15 of them being time stamped. You know, we don't necessarily have to wait for the timestamp to get, you know, mobility and get these dogs out. You know, it's just a matter of really getting the message out, as you said, that they were doing, um, and allowing those, everybody has different equitable resources, right? So allowing those, to bring those things to the table, to continue to do this until we can get this situation, you know, under control, because every council member, every council meeting should not be about, so why are we still paying this money to this kennel, and what are we doing in overcrowding, and so on and so forth? Um, so I just wanted to put that out there, and again, applaud the efforts of everybody involved, um, in getting those dogs adopted, as that is, um, paramount. So really quickly, I don't like to do this, but I, I, I know I touched on, um, an issue earlier that I was going to touch on the civil, civic comment, but I just want to touch on something else that keeps floating through the newspapers and through social media, and I just want to squash it. Um, any inquisitions, uh, thoughts, perceptions as to what the last election for president and vice president of this council was, what it was not, it needs to be put to rest. I conceded that night. Had I known that I was not going to be elected as president that night, I would have declined the nomination. I did not know. There were certain individuals that I was well aware were not going to vote for me that night, and there were some that I was not aware. It does not matter, the only person, the only people that need to answer to why I was not elected president are those persons who voted no or abstained. It is not anybody else's, and any other interactions that come before this council or any other bickering or whatever should not be equated to whether or not I was selected and elected as president of this council. That is outside of this, that is in and of itself something totally different. There's a lot of things going on on this council with the administration, and everybody's trying to work to do what they're trying to do at this point. Anybody's opinions, anybody's issues are their own, and I would appreciate that it does not continue to come back and reflect on anything to do with that night. We have moved on, we have a new president, we have a new vice president, and this council needs to move on accordingly. Anything personal that came out of that day is anybody's opinion and personal. Do I think that I was qualified to be president? Absolutely. I served as vice president for a year. I'm a director in my capacity for over four years for the state of New Jersey. Absolutely. It was not my colleagues' choice. I was not their choice for president, and that's what I had said to the newspaper earlier on.
Councilwoman, I believe that's your time.
Won this election, so I just wanted to state that for the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Thank you, Vice President. Um, so I wanted to first wish everyone a happy Black History Month, um, for the month of February. Um, we are, uh, will have things that'll be going on throughout the city, we ask that you be mindful of them. Next, on next Tuesday, February the 11th at 5:30 PM, as with you, with those of you who live in the West Ward or are interested in the conversation, we will be having our West Ward Community Conversation at the same location, 600 Artisan Street, here in the city of Trenton. Um, also, February is also cancer prevention, uh, screening. We want you to be mindful. Um, screening is the first step. Make sure you get yourself tested, make sure that you're paying attention, and heart awareness as well. Um, I wanted to just address a minor issue, and that is, there are a lot of folks, not that, I will not, I take that back. There are people who, who are in the community who are determined to see this council become, um, as our, our predecessors. They are determined to see us bickering, they are determined to see chaos, they are determined to see fighting. I want to let you know you're all in for a big disappointment. We are not those people, we are not going to adhere to it. Those, there are people who choose to try to interfere, you were not elected. You don't have to like us, we were elected, you were not. So I say that to say, stop interfering, stop trying to be the voice of council, because you do, are not the voice of council. We do not adhere to what you have to say, be it online, be it in the newspaper, be it in any form of social media. At the end of the day and at the start of the day, we are colleagues, we don't have to agree on everything, but we do respect one another in our positions that we are in. So I say to all the naysayers, to all of those who don't have enough to write about because we're not clowning around up here, get over it. You have who you have, we are going to be here to do the business of this city. This is a professional council that you have here, even when we don't disagree, when we disagree with one another, we are still respectful of one another. The job gets done. Personal agendas do not come in here, so that is my, um, my comments. Get over it, cut it out, you are not elected, you do not, you, you can put everything that you want to put out, all your op-eds, everything in the papers, everything in the online, it does not change. Your voice is not the one of these seven that sit up on this stage. I thank you, and everybody get home safely. I appreciate everybody that came out on this evening, and with that, I'm going to read the portion of the, uh, city submission statement that recognizes that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations, and to serve all the city's people with, with respect and compassion. Have a great evening.
Councilwoman Harrison.
First, I would like to thank my colleagues, uh, Councilwoman Williams, Councilwoman Feliciano, Council VP Edwards, were here yesterday for the Black History Month kickoff and flag raising, the mayor, all the great city employees. It's always great to see us always coming together and standing up for the history of this great city. Um, also would like to thank, uh, or actually like to wish, uh, Council President Yasmin Elie-Gonzalez, it's her birthday, wish, like, wish her happy birthday. Um, Feliciano, you have four minutes left. Uh, Clerk, um, Mr. Garcia, could I concede my minutes to, to her, let her speak? Could I concede my minutes to let her speak? Because I'm, I, I feel a little weird that, because I spoke to her and I thought maybe she might have the opportunity to speak. So could, could I concede my four minutes to let her speak?
I'm going to defer to the solicitor.
Council President, can I allow her, her to speak, use my four minutes, concede at least to let her speak?
If that is your wish.
Thank you.
No.
Mr. Colagi, if you could opine to that, please.
Yes, please.
Um, while he's looking for that, I.
Can you find the brother?
Give me one moment, please. While he's looking at that, I will read from our, uh, from our rules of engagement here. Matter, manner of addressing council, time limit, each person wishing to address council during public comment, portion of the meeting shall sign in on the sheet provided at the entrance for such purpose prior to the commencement of the meeting. Once recognized here, she shall approach the microphone, provide his or her name and address for the record unless further times granted by Council President. I interpret prior to the commencement of the meeting to be having signed prior to the moment where public comment is called. In any event, our, uh, again, I'll ask the solicitor, is that appropriate for the, uh, for the council member to concede his time to the member of the public?
Let her speak.
Understood. Madam Vice President, if you want to move on.
Can I let her speak?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Harrison, according to Robert's rules of order.
All right. Sorry about that.
It's definitely commendable, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Williams?
Uh, thank you, ma'am. Uh, just want to say, uh, welcome to everyone who's here tonight, um, everyone watching online who, uh, or may watch on YouTube soon. I'd say Happy Black History Month. Uh, it's very important that we celebrate this month in our country's history because of the involvement of Black Americans, African-Americans in our history, and it was a holiday created in 1926. And as I said, uh, yesterday, uh, at the beautiful ceremony on the steps, we would not have a federal holiday for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., nor would we have Juneteenth without Black History Month. Because most Americans did not know about Juneteenth, Juneteenth, until Black History Month encouraged them to learn and provided that information. And just as important for Dr. King to be able to honor him. So I want to, uh, also address Mr. Dixon and, uh, his concerns and comments. So the reason, um, after my colleague Councilwoman Feliciano brought potential conflicts of interest, uh, it's an interesting discussion to have, and I fully support that she brought that up, but the reason I brought up, uh, about UEZ funding has nothing to do actually with Mr. Dixon. There's a great saying, "A lie can travel halfway around the world while the truth is putting on its pants," or some people say shoes. And the reputation of those who would be involved and selected for this particular resolution and this plan, this project, is very important. And they're accomplished business people, and I've supported them in the past, I've supported Mr. Dixon himself. And while we can't fix what happened in the past, any conflicts that should have been identified in the past, we must make sure that we do so now and in the future. And in my comment, I actually said that we wanted to make sure we protected the reputation of the principles of this company. So when we asked a question, I asked a question, uh, we did not get an answer from HED. That's an answer we should be able to get. We have to find out from Law Department, this will take a couple of weeks, to just get a determination what's possible, what's not possible. Uh, the principles of this company may want to utilize UEZ funding in the future, but in the eyes of the public, because they will be developing a plan and everything regarding that, um, we want to make sure that their reputation isn't besmirched by what could perceive as favoritism. And that is something that's happened in the city's history. So if Mr. Dixon, um, is offended by what I said, I apologize, I wasn't intended to offend you, but I know. you, but I know based on your practices, your experience, you are an impeccable businessman. I know you have a high ethical standard. But we have to also, as a council, make sure that going forward for everyone, no matter what the project is, that we have ethical guidelines that are followed and we make sure that things are kosher per se. And that, again, has nothing to do with Mr. Dixon, but to allay the concerns you made yourself about what's happened in the past, we can only start fixing them one at a time. And that's my hope. So with that, I just want to add also, Mr. John Harmon, many of us know, he's president and CEO of the African American Chamber of Commerce of New Jersey. He often talks about how only 1% of African American businesses actually get contracts from the state of New Jersey. That's abysmal and that's something we do need to help here in the city of Trenton where we can, to make sure Trenton businesses get a piece of the government pie, that they get business from the city and get a chance to grow, just as Mr. Harmon and the African American Chamber of Commerce are trying to do at the state level. Finally, just a couple major points. We need to fix parking in this city, not just in downtown, but downtown, it's hurting our businesses. It's also in other business districts. We need to start practicing enforcement in residential neighborhoods, people parking at corners so if people can't turn around to make a turn, people are parking in front of fire hydrants, which is a $300 fine in this city and it does seem, I don't know that it's being enforced. I hope it does, but we have to have this. Too many businesses are losing business. Downtown on Warren Street, Broad Street, we need to create parking space for Grubhub, for Uber Eats. We need to have temporary parking so these businesses, these restaurants we have can thrive. Finally, I want to thank Council Vice President Edwards for her comments earlier about antisemitism and comments regarding anyone's ethnic or religious background. It's very important. That cannot survive in a city. That's not appropriate. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. That brings me to my comments. I want to say happy birthday to our council president Yasmin Elie-Gonzalez. For, her birthday is actually tonight or today, which is why she is not here. I want to say, in short, I do support 25-030 because, you know, I understand that there are, there could be perceptions from the public on a potential conflict of interest, but to Mr. Dixon's comments earlier, who better to know what our downtown, our city, our urban enterprise zones, who better to know what they need than an actual stakeholder in the city who has vested, invested in our city? So I would love to see this resolution get passed because I do know that there are some financial barriers around that as well. So, and our city needs this. Our city does need this. We need better plans and we need people that can help move this city forward. This administration and this council cannot do that alone. I want to say, I want to, I appreciate my colleagues for the respectful dialogue earlier about the, the council liaison ordinance that I'm introducing and I look forward to our continued conversations as we smooth out this ordinance and then also getting to our subcommittee ordinance coming down the pike. I want to say happy Black History Month. I want to commend the city for a great presentation yesterday. Paul Harris did an excellent job emceeing. Shanique Talaferro is such a powerful speaker. It was amazing to hear her with everything that she mentioned. And I want to give a shout out to Khadija who raised the flags up on the, outside of the mayor's office on the balcony. I want to say, you know, being a black woman in America carries deep meaning for me. It's a legacy of resilience, strength and unwavering perseverance. As we raise this flag, we not only honor the contributions of Black Americans, but also recognize that our history is still being written. With civil rights protections and DEI initiatives under attack, we must stand firm in defending the progress our ancestors fought so hard to achieve. I want to thank the mayor and the city of Trenton for raising this flag. It's a powerful symbol of our city's commitment to truth, equity and empowerment for generations to come. So thank you again. And lastly, I want to discuss, address some of the parking issues. I will be reaching out to the administration to follow up on the comments that I'm about to say and then the comments that Councilwoman Williams has said, a lot of the parking issues are within her district there downtown in the North Ward, but as to her point, it is also citywide. But I wanted to speak to the most recent issue that was brought to our attention via Facebook where a woman had received a parking ticket on West State Street in front of, just on the first block of West State Street. The ticket was issued to her at 4:53 PM, but the ticket in her window that she paid for at the kiosk said 5:01 PM. She was parked in a designated zone only about 15 feet from the kiosk itself. The ticket also said no standing or stopping, but the sign up there said, "No parking when the roads are snow covered." She was not in a no standing or stopping zone. Also furthermore, the ticket said that she was on West Lafayette Street when she was on West State Street. The person that issued that ticket, and I know we're not allowed to say employees' names as per, you know, we would have to rice them in order to do that, is the same person that is exhibiting predatory behaviors all around the city. She is like issuing tickets just unlawfully. I, I mean, at this point, it's predatory, it's predatory behavior. She was completely out of line. Everything on that ticket was incorrect and that's embarrassing for the city. It's embarrassing for the council, it's embarrassing for the administration, for us to have, keep on addressing these issues and with the same employee, it seems. So I think that a further conversation needs to happen directly with the administration so that we can address this said employee because either she needs to get her act together or something needs to happen. So that's my recommendations and to Councilwoman Williams' point, there are a lot of outdated parking or issues all around the city dating back to 1967 that we need to address and I want to assure the public that we're on it.
Council Vice President, I believe that's your time as well.
Thank you. Have a good night and thank you for coming. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Madam Vice President. At this time, I believe we've reached the point of executive session. Executive session this evening for pending litigation. We have two items listed on the agenda, NJDEP versus Trenton Waterworks, as well as Resolution 25-40, Resolution authorizing settlement of a civil action in the matter of Carista Nunez versus City of Trenton in total amount of $100,000. We do anticipate a vote coming out of executive session. Madam Vice President, if you want to ask for a motion to go into executive session, please?
Can I have a motion to go into executive session, please?
Second.
Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano. Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams? Again, to the public, we do anticipate a vote coming out of executive session this evening.
Let's get through this.
We're called, uh, Councilman Harris.
On your call, Madam Vice President, on your call once you have a quorum.
Yes, we, uh, we do have a vote, so if we can have the council members return back to the dais, at least four of us, so that we have a quorum.
For the vote.
For the vote and a settlement. Yes, and to vote to come out of executive session.
Hold on, one, two, three, one, two, three, four. Madam Vice President, I believe we have a quorum at this time, if you want to ask for a motion to come out of executive session.
And I have a motion to come out of the executive session.
So, second.
All say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? None opposed, moving on, Madam Vice President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash forty.
And I have a motion to approve twenty-five dash forty.
So moved.
Thank you.
One moment, please. Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Councilwoman Feliciano. Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattenburg.
No.
Noted. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Reluctantly, yes. Aggressively, yes.
Understood, noted. Councilman Harrison. Noted as well. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam Vice President, if you want to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? None opposed, meaning adjourn, thank you.
Thank you.